President Slocum, the time is now 9:03 a.m. You can call the meeting to order.
So I'll call the meeting to order. And good morning, everybody in chambers and online if you're there. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 25th. And we're going to begin with some instructions from our clerk and how to, how this hybrid meeting will be conducted. And then if Victor Hernandez is here, I don't see Victor, but there we'll have some translations of those instructions. So, Mr. Clerk, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom, please click the interpretation globe icon in your Zoom webinar control and then select the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Good morning, President Slocum, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Manquia, Mr. Niblin, county staff and all members of the public. I'm Rono Bregón with On Point Language Solutions. Miembros del público las instrucciones para participar en la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en el orden del día publicado. Estas instrucciones proporcionan información sobre cómo presentar comentarios por escrito y también cómo participar a través de Zoom. Se les ofrecerá interpretación en directo de toda la reunión en español. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación en directo, haga clic en el icono del globo, es decir, un mundo, en los controles de su reunión diagonal webinar de Zoom y después seleccione su idioma. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for that. We'll turn to the Pledge of Allegiance now. I'm going to ask Mr. Manquia to lead us in the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the judicial, legal, and justice of all.
Thank you, Mr. Manquia. Well done. We'll do the roll call now, Mr. Clerk.
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Present.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Present.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Here.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa and President Slocum.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the agenda, we'll turn to honoring the life of and board member remarks. And perhaps we'll start down with Mr. Mueller since he's got his mic on. Nope. Okay, nothing there. Mr. Canepa, Mr. Pine. Kind of a sad, not kind of, it is a sad matter to share with you all this morning. Allison Smiley, who worked in the county attorney's office. She was a valued member of the county attorney's team and she passed away early yesterday morning. Allison Smiley was a lead paralegal with the county attorney's office where she worked for some two years before her illness and during her illness. Allison loved her work. She loved her work here in the county and made her mark as an extraordinarily competent and caring employee who brought energy and kindness to every project she touched. We mourn Allison's loss, think of her friends and family and her county attorney's family. And I'm sure that Mr. Niblin wants to share a few comments.
Yep, thank you, Supervisor. I thank you for mentioning and honoring Allison today. She, you know, passed tragically young, had, you know, graduated from University of California in Santa Barbara in 2013. She's a, was a law school grad, went to law school at Humphreys University, had spent some time as a public school teacher and then made a transition into, into legal work and came to us in 2021 and made her mark just immediately as just a wonderful colleague, somebody who, as you noted, is, was just extremely competent. And even more important, she brought such kindness and, and a desire to serve the public to the work that she did in our office. And she, you know, in the couple of years she spent with us, made a, made a deep mark and a lot of relationships. I was frankly moved and just touched by the support that her colleagues in the county attorney's office showed for her and frankly, folks from throughout the county, the support that so many people showed for her when she had to go out ill. And spent about a year on leave. And as you noted, she, she succumbed to her illness yesterday, but, you know, can take some comfort knowing she was surrounded by her, her family and her friends when she, when she passed. And she's certainly, you know, top of mind with us here in the county attorney's office as we think about, as we think about her and her, and the mark that she made. Her, her mom let us know that, you know, she just loved the work that she did for the county. She loved the, the mission and loved being a part of our team. So again, thank you for taking a minute to, to mention her and honor her today.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'm going to go off script here, Mr. Callagie. I'm going to ask if there are any of her colleagues in the room that want to say a word or two.
You know, I, I actually, I don't know that there actually are today. I think it was just going to be incumbent on me to say, to say a few words. So thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you. I'll start with the board report if it's okay with my colleagues. Yesterday was the two-year anniversary since the U.S. Supreme Court overturned Roe versus Wade in the Dobbs decision, which governed reproductive rights for some 50 years in this country. Yesterday, we held a rally for reproductive rights. It was organized by Assembly Member Diane Pappin. Thank you, Diane, right here over at the courthouse square. And there were a lot of people there. If you look on the front page of the San Mateo Daily Journal this morning, you'll see a picture of the crowd and a story about that event. The Dobbs decision, as you all know, since then, many, many states have banned or restricted abortions in early pregnancy than the standard that was set by Roe versus Wade, leaving little or no leniency for, for the health of the mother or whether the pregnancy was due to rape or incest. This is something that we all should be concerned about. And this board with Supervisor Pine and myself as a subcommittee, we formed when the Dobbs decision was actually leaked but not yet handed down. And we unanimously declared our unwavering support for women's reproductive freedom and healthcare policy. And thank you, colleagues, for that. We did so by a resolution and we committed $1 million to Planned Parenthood Maramonte to help increase patient capacity through technology to address the expected and realized, actually, increase in demand for healthcare services from women coming from throughout our state. In closing, we know there is a lot more to do and the stakes are high this November. Not to be political, but will keep you apprised of our progress. And the second tranche of that money will soon be going to Maramonte for an automated system that will help with medication management. So thank you for those colleagues who attend. Supervisor Corzo, thank you for attending yesterday. Appreciate it. Supervisor Pine, thank you for your leadership. And with that, I don't know if anybody else has a comment? No? Okay. So we'll turn to public comment now. And, Mr. Clerk, do you want to give a brief instruction?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Public comment is reserved for items that are listed under consent agenda, closed session, or any county related matter that is not on this agenda. We'll take public speakers from chambers first and then we'll do Zoom. I do have one speaker from chambers and that's Bill Newell. And you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Slocum and entire board today for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Newell. I'm a 35, Platoon resident of Redwood City in San Mateo County. First of all, I want to thank you for your leadership, for your continued support for women's health, healthcare and reproductive rights. It's, it's a continued concern for all of us, as you've already stated, and I thank you for your leadership and the funds that you've put behind it. But I'm also here because I want to point out, I'm a member of Coalition for Safer San Mateo County. We're a 36-member coalition group, as you may know. And I want to speak to this affiliate advisory committee which you formed last week. You announced it. That's a historic first step for genuine law enforcement transparency and accountability, and we thank you for that. However, I continue to be concerned about the five people who have died in the county jail over the last year or two and continued lack of complete transparency and accountability for that. Our public safety is on the line. Oversight is real. It's a big deal for our community. If we don't get it right, it will be a profound disappointment to a number of our citizens who've worked very hard and continue to work in good faith for oversight in San Mateo County. The commission that was created, the committee may be independent in name, but the board really has chosen to retain all of the actual transparency and accountability for oversight authority. And you are the county board, the oversight authority for the sheriff's office. And Supervisor Chair Slocum and David Pines, in particular, you are our committee. So when people turn and ask me about the sheriff's office, I have to point to our county board and to our representatives there who really provide the oversight for the sheriff's office. So that's where I refer them when questions come up, such as what's happened now, most recently with the change in leadership. People want to know what happened. I have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Mr. Clerk, as a reminder, the consent agenda begins at item 10 through the end of the agenda at closed session. Four hands raised. Dan Stejng, followed by Martin Fox. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. My first is a public comment on President Slocum's mission and the $1 million they gave. I volunteer regularly about 100 yards from the Maramonte facility. It's, it's a primarily Vietnamese location down in San Jose in Santa Clara County. There's, there's got a huge homeless problem. Sometimes there's a, there's a line outside this facility. I have, I have a relative who owns a home there and they had three neighbors murdered that live within 300 yards of their home in the last four years. So it's really an area that needs help. I'd like to thank President Slocum for that. Second of all, as my public comments for the items not on the agenda, I'd like to speak about the $20 billion BAFTA bond. I filed a CPRA for the, every document created by EMC Research on their, their polling company. And it's clear that the, the members aren't getting, the commissioners aren't getting the full, full information, but there's zero chance this bond will pass. It has 45% out of the bond support in San Mateo County. They don't break it down by district, but San Mateo County is the least supportive of this. There's a, there's a false hope that this will do something for renters, and it won't. By, by state law, general obligation bonds cannot do anything except purchase assets and improve those assets. The, the number one polling, the number one polling story for their, for this bond was a Shores Landing approach, transformed hotel, essentially a project Home Key Hotel. And the, it has a, it has a fallacy in the poll, you know, Shores Landing. It's, it's giving a specific marine coastal location that is saying, oh, this isn't in your neighborhood kind of thing. And basically, there's all kinds of problems with the polling. And their original polling showed that $20 billion was more likely to pass than $10 billion by 3%. And their most recent polling shows the exact opposite, that 10, 10 billion is 5%, more likely to pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Six hands, Martin Fox, followed by Andrew Craycroft. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow veterans, President Slocum and County Attorney Mr. Niblin. Supervisors, Canepa, Corzo, Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Callagie. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting the county judiciary's vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Lannan-Petra Short Act a top county state legislative priority, the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43 a top county health department priority, and defunding of disability rights California under the law foundation of Silicon Valley attorneys who defend the immoral Lannan-Petra Short Act a top county federal legislative priority. California's residents need a Dorothea Dix inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. The Lannan-Petra Short Act is one of the 10 worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the 50 states. The LPS acts racist, dangerous, and grave disability treatment qualification criteria continues to kill people. Parents of adult children living with serious mental illness who are treatment resistant and live in parts of the county outside of Hillsboro or Atherton cannot afford to help their loved ones escape injury and death by going to states like Utah to get the treatment they need safely. Thanks to the first district supervisor, they also have to confront the evils of the ACLU-supported opposition to Senate Bill 4 that criminalizes persons living with serious mental illness complicated by substance use disorders. Please make the funding of the intellectually and morally bankrupt law foundation of Silicon Valley and disability rights California attorneys a top county federal legislative priority, the reintroduction and passage of the Lannan-Petra Short Acts repeal a top county state legislative priority, and the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43 the highest county health department priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Andrew, Andrew Craycroft, followed by Deborah Penrose. Andrew, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Craycroft. I'm an attorney with the Immigrant Legal Resource Center. I want to talk a bit about the new immigration policies of the Biden administration from the last couple of weeks and their impact on the need for immigration legal services in our county. Earlier this month, the Biden administration enacted a rule gutting asylum access similar to the Trump administration's 2018 asylum ban. Although it's presented as a measure that simply closes the border, in reality, it's much more complicated than that. And many asylum seekers will still be able to enter the United States, but will then have to prove that they meet a legal exception to this rule's bar to asylum eligibility later on in court. It's also expected to increase family separations as, and young people winding up in immigration proceedings on their own, as families are forced to choose between staying together at the border and sending their children to safety alone in the U.S. Meanwhile, the administration has also announced legal protections for undocumented spouses of U.S. citizens, as well as measures that will help DACA holders whose status is currently at risk, and it will help them access the employment-based visa system and get a more stable form of immigration status. These protections could help a lot of community members here, but again, they will need access to quality legal services so that they're not navigating the system on their own, or even worse, being defrauded by scammers, which is an unfortunate reality, especially when there's a lack of quality legal services in an area. Both of these developments, while they have very different impacts in our communities, really speak to the need for immigration legal services. And I hope that that is something that the county will consider supporting, and I hope that the, the county will continue to support its immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Three hands, Deborah Penrose, followed by Rob Skinner. Deborah, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. Thank you, Board, for listening to me today. My name is Deborah Penrose. I'm a member of the Half Moon Bay City Council, speaking as a citizen, a private citizen today, and also as a retired practitioner of medicine from Half Moon Bay, formerly on the staff of Seton Daily City and Seton Coastside. I am speaking on number, item number 70 on the consent agenda. I want to thank Ray Mueller for his support and the board's support for providing medical care here on the coast. I have some concerns, however. I know it's been hard getting to this point, and I certainly appreciate all the work that's gone into it by our Board of Supervisors, especially Mr. Mueller. However, I am fearful that this is a pilot program which will fail because it is not well-designed. Any program that has healthcare provided for four days a week is inadequate. If I break my thumb on a Tuesday, I cannot go to the urgent care because there is no urgent care. If I break my toe on a Sunday or have a severe cough and asthma attack on Sunday, I can't go to the urgent care because it doesn't exist. It only exists from Wednesday through Saturday. I also have questions about the availability of radiology and lab draw for blood draw station here on the coast. Those are the things that our healthcare advisory committee has been working on for the past year to try to get healthcare here on the coast. So please, pilot programs need to be well-designed in order to be successful. There's nothing worse than putting $500,000 into a pilot program which will fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Rob Skinner of Pescadero Municipal Council, CSA 11, followed by Taylor. Rob, please unmute and begin. Rob Skinner? Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Rob Skinner, and I am a longtime resident of Pescadero. I'm here this morning to request the continuance of item number 15 from the consent calendar. The PMAC is a duly elected board, and I am the only duly elected council member and the most senior board member. So I would like to emphasize that those who have said that this is not an elected board are incorrect. The remaining members were all appointed by sitting board members because there were vacancies and not enough interest from our residents to run for election. No one has ever not been welcomed or not accepted when they wish to become a counselor. Thus, unfortunately, it appears that our board is not an elected board. After my election, when our countywide voting was up again, I spoke with the elections officer to get directions for the process. It was decided by the elections office that if we didn't have contested seats, we wouldn't need to be placed on a ballot. At our recent June meeting, Ray attended and introduced the idea of reducing the size of the board from 13 to five. We had no advance notice of this and no opportunity to properly discuss among ourselves, let alone with our communities. Here's what was on the meeting agenda. 6:15 to 7:15, special guest District 3 Supervisor Ray Mueller, 45 minutes. Supervisor Ray Mueller will visit PMAC to talk about upcoming elections, the housing element, and other issues. The process to discuss the issue of restructuring our board has yet to be agendized, so Ray's bringing this issue to the Board of Supervisors is a little heavy-handed and premature. We currently, excuse me, we currently have six board members and I polled three, all that I could reach. And the four of us are all in favor of reducing board to no less than seven. Our geographic area is the largest of any unincorporated county community. We're a very diverse community of farmers, ranchers, businesses, retirees, commuters, farm labor residents, and are composed of two and a half towns. We recently need, we really need at least seven council members in order to have proper representation for all. And heaven knows that we do most of the work ourselves. It's as challenging to get volunteers as it is to get council members to run for reelection. Therefore, I respectfully request that you continue item 15 from the consent calendar today in order that the PMAC board may discuss this at a PMAC meeting. Respectfully, it appears that Ray may have been a little premature in this process. Thank you for your attention and your valuable time.
Thank you, Rob. Our last hand for Taylor. Taylor, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. I am Taylor Allen. I am a 40-year resident of the Coastside. I have lived out in Pescadero my entire life, and I wanted to discuss the same thing with continuance of, of this item that Rob was talking about. I, I feel like our town has been a very special place for a very long time. And we have gotten by by being a town of farmers and carpenters and, and doing everything ourselves. So for me, when I looked at the email from the county and, and it basically was instructions on how to vote, when to vote, how we were going to be reducing our seats, I didn't feel like that was our town being represented by our views. And since we're on the topic of our views, I wanted to speak on the, the first board members and the first supervisors' comments. Sir, I think as a public servant, I think, again, speaking in heavy hands, I think it was very heavy-handed of you to show your obvious and deep political bias. And it almost felt like you were angry at half of your constituents. And, you know, it's like, for me, as a public servant, I try to hold myself to a higher standard. And sure, I will, I will make jokes as well, but I think that it's important to respect all of your constituents and not just some. And for instance, I don't disagree with you on abortion rights and all that, but there are some topics that the Board of Supervisors have chosen to rule on in the past. For instance, like the lockdowns. I greatly disagree with a lot of views, and I don't feel like I've been represented. And I don't feel like a lot of my constituents that, like me and my position of office, felt represented either. I, I think it's very important for you to operate in an impartial and unbiased manner because you're not representing just people who agree with you. You're also representing people who don't. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, Taylor. We had one hand raised for Melissa Pollard. Melissa, I don't see it raised anymore. Let me just make sure if that was unintended. Melissa Pollard, if you could re-raise if you would like to speak at this time. I'll go to Carlisle Anne Young. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. You can hear me, Sharon, right?
Yes, thank you.
Carlisle Anne Young, Moss Beach. I am within the Midcoast Community Council District, and I very much feel for PMAC as well because both of those boards were set up a while ago as advisory councils. They do have to run for office, but the county gives them no money for actually holding the office and dealing with all the things they have to deal with. And I myself am on a special district in Montero, the Montero Water and San Antonio District, but we do get paid per meeting. And I know there's a lot of work that goes on, especially for the Midcoast Community Council, you know, outside of their actual meetings. So maybe the county wants to control the narrative by, you know, having these, these advisory councils in between the, the Board of Supervisors and the community. But they really only swoop in and give us a quick little comment session and then take off, and they really aren't in there doing the hard, heavy lifting. So although I'm not on the Midcoast Community Council, I do attend quite a few of their board meetings, and I know how much work goes into them. It's something to consider for the future to make that a paid position since it is an elected office and it is, there are, there is a lot of work involved. The county, for instance, makes them review the proposals for projects that are going in nearby, et cetera, and they have to look into all of that. That's all I had to say, and I hope that, that the county will consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carlisle. Melissa Polling, I just want to double check. Did you intend to talk during this period? If you can unmute your microphone and confirm.
Can you hear me? No, I, I talked in the measure tape part. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much. Mr. President, I'll turn it now back to Mr. Clerk for the written comment that came.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisors, there were several written comments that were sent yesterday and this morning which were emailed to the board and also made publicly available. I did receive one additional comment just now. It's from Hillary Judkins. I believe this is consent item number 70, Dignity Health. I'm very concerned after hearing that San Mateo County has made plans to contract with Dignity Health to create an urgent care for the Coastside using their current office space in Half Moon Bay. Dignity HMB already has difficulty finding full-time doctors for this office to take, to take care for the local residents who are already long-term patients there. Frequently, these people have to go to another dignity location over the hill or find another doctor in town. How are they going to staff an urgent care? Are they going to get rid of primary care portion and just have an urgent care now? What are the patients supposed to do? Just see whomever is staffing the urgent care? There are several other concerns, too. The proposed hours for this urgent care are a problem as it will not only be open every day. What are people supposed to do the other days when it's closed? Will this location take all insurances, insurance, or only those insurance that are already accepted by Dignity? Will x-ray and laboratory services added and available at this location? Currently, patients have to go elsewhere for testing. If this remains the case, then this isn't truly an urgent care. Let's end the public comment, Mr. President. So back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for all the public comments. We'll turn now to set the agenda and approve of the consent agenda items. Mr. Mueller?
Yes, so I'm going to go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and I'll pull item fifteen and the only reason why I'm pulling item fifteen, so uh, very quickly just to share. We had multiple conversations with Mark Wallace and, and some of the members of the Pescadero Advisory Committee about this item. It was unanimously approved, uh, by the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Committee at the last meeting. But nonetheless, we've heard from two members who have remorse and so I'll go ahead and pull that item and just so the public's aware, entertain the, the idea of changing it from five to seven.
Mr. President, if I, if I could, I just want to note that, um, this is the last board meeting prior to the, um, to a date that is eighty-eight days prior to the election, so.
That's why we would change it from five to seven in this meeting and keep it rolling.
Understood. Thank you. I, I don't see any legal problem with, um, with that tweak. Um, we can certainly conform the documents to that if that's what the board wants to do.
I appreciate that. And then just only, uh, I have no other items, but we did want to speak uh, to item seventy, urgent care for the coast and explain, uh, to both council member Penrose and to the public that this contract was put together under haste to satisfy a need in the public because of the seating room, uh, emergency room closing. If we were going to be starting from scratch, uh, with a timeline that we could go ahead and get the most robust urgent care possible, this would not be it. But we are trying to satisfy a need right now. And I am so grateful, uh, to, uh, our, uh, to Louise and our Rogers and our medical center, uh, team, our health team to try to get something as fast as possible uh, that though may be imperfect, is not the enemy of the good. And so, uh, very grateful for that and that we can have some healthcare in the interim time period while these emergency room centers are closed. So I'm going to leave seventy on to go ahead and get approved today and we'll keep working to make healthcare more robust on the coast.
Right. Uh, President Slocum, you know, I, I think item seventy is, is really important and I, I want to thank, uh, Supervisor Mueller, uh, for your leadership. I mean, to, to really have access, um, to the coast and to have healthcare is vitally important. Um, you can only imagine, um, if you didn't have this and I don't, I understand the argument, um, in terms of the dates and times and when people ideally want it. But right now, we have a gap. And what item seventy does, and make no mistake about it, is it ensures that people on the coast have healthcare access. So, um, I'm in full support of, of item seventy and I do think for those residents who live on the coast, um, this is going to be, uh, an incredible asset that can be used. And I think what's before us today is if we do not support item seventy, essentially what we're, what we're doing is we're creating a donut hole in access to healthcare and that's certainly something, um, that I believe as a board member, uh, would be irresponsible. So, um, again Supervisor Mueller, thank you for your leadership, um, on this issue and I'm in full support of, of item seventy.
Thank, thank you Supervisor Canepa and we see it as a first step.
Mr. President, could I ask one more question just, uh, with respect to item fifteen? I, I just wanted to be very clear on that item. It's gonna, it's gonna move forward today, uh, and I'm, I'm just trying to be.
I was going to pull the item because I don't think I can make an amendment to the resolution within the consent calendar, so I was going to pull the item to.
And we'll consider it separately.
Consider it separately.
I, I have a few comments at that time then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, anything?
Okay.
Okay. Um, colleagues, I'd like to pull, uh, with your approval, item twenty-three uh, off the agenda and postpone that to a later date. So can someone make a motion, please?
I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda. And with, I'll move the consent agenda, pulling item twenty-three and item fifteen.
Second. Roll call.
Just to clarify, uh, pulling item number fifteen from consent to regular and then pulling item number twenty-three off the agenda.
Thank you.
And then I'll take the roll call. Uh, Supervisor Pine? Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you all very much. Um, turn now to item number one on the agenda, which is to adopt a resolution approving the FY twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget submitted by the county executive. And I believe Mr. Calagie is going to take it from here, or is it Mr. Mankia?
Well, I'm going to start it off and then turn it over to Mr. Mankia if that's okay with the board. And, uh, thank you, President Slocum and members of the board. I really, uh, appreciate, uh, this time and opportunity to present, uh, to you the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It just seems like we were here yesterday working on the two-year budget, um, and here we are halfway through it. Uh, in the second year of our two-year budget cycle, I'll be recommending, uh, allocating four point two billion for all funds, of which two point nine billion are county general funds. What these funds do is really meet, um, the board goals that, that all of you have set out as priorities in the area of children, families, seniors, emergency preparedness, housing and, uh, housing, especially those, uh, that are unhoused, um, over the next fiscal year, while also continuing to provide our general mandates related to social services, public health, infrastructure, and public safety. And as you know, on infrastructure in particular, we've made great strides with several of those projects, uh, coming to a successful conclusion. And now we'll reap the benefits of, uh, those infrastructure investments that this board has made over the years. And as we reflect back on last year and the board retreat conducted in March, um, I think we all recall that, uh, we'll continue to advocate for a cautious fiscal approach due to the challenging economic conditions that we continue to face. Um, there's been a lot of change from a financial perspective across the nation and certainly with, uh, the global impacts, uh, there's remains this uncertainty out there. Um, even with the state's budget ready to be signed, we really don't know or understand the full impacts of the, the deficit that's faced at the state. Um, and we'll talk about some of those, uh, coming up in the, uh, in the next slides. But it is, um, a time to be cautious. It's a time to reflect upon, um, where the best value for the taxpayer dollars are. Uh, there needs to be accountability, uh, in our spending of those taxpayer dollars. Uh, more robust, uh, um, evaluation of programs that we invest in to ensure that those investments are wise investments and that they are reaping, uh, the, the public's reaping the benefits that we believe they should be from those. So let me talk a little bit about the, uh, economic challenges that we face and we'll start with the, the state funding. Um, as we know, the proposed, uh, um, governor's budget, um, proposes forty-four point nine billion in cuts. And this may affect and may have a profound impact on the human services, um, and health services programs. Um, in, in particular, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, public health, IHSS, behavioral health. We don't yet know what the impacts are and we'll be evaluating this as soon as the budget is signed so we can fully understand. The legislature has rolled back some of the proposed cuts, including adding back in lieu VLF. Uh, thank you, um, somebody remember Diane Pappan and Senator Weiner and all our other legislators who fought so hard for this. This would have been devastating to this county had we not received, um, the VLF this year. Uh, this is our taxpayer money that belongs in this county and that fight is not over as this board knows. We're going to have to, um, really come back with a, with a long-term solution to this that doesn't shortchange our taxpayers and ultimately impact the programs that are so needed uh, and that we provide, uh, in this, uh, in this county. In regard to the economic uncertainty, I think you're all too familiar with this, but amid the high inflation that continues to impact the consumer um, and certainly the, uh, high interest rates that prohibit, um, home buying and spending um, and expansion of companies, it's really had an impact on our realignment and Prop one seventy-two and general sales tax and other tax revenues, um, that are all really at risk because of these, uh, because of this economic climate. So, so for all sales tax, including measure K, we receive about four hundred and twenty-seven million. So when you look at our sales tax, uh, it's down a one point five percent, which equates to six point five million dollars. Now, you compound that with the fact that we've had inflation or, or we've had the CPI growth of, of around three point five percent. You see we're at a ten percent deficit, um, which equates, uh, I'm sorry, which equates to ten million dollars. Um, it's not a ten percent deficit, but it's a ten million dollar shortfall that, uh, that we're seeing here. Um, and that impacts, you know, obviously with Prop one seventy-two, uh, public safety, those are public safety funds we're talking about. So, and then, um, you know, when, uh, we talk about real estate, uh, we've got the, the reduced property transfers that have slowed greatly because of the interest rates. Uh, we're also seeing, uh, a twenty-two percent vacancy rate in our commercial properties. Certainly significant, not the highest in the Bay Area by any stretch of the imagination, but still significant. We feel that certainly that there's a pent-up demand out there for, um, you know, real estate purchases and, and when um, those interest rates drop and they eventually will, uh, not as quickly as we had, uh, all hoped, um, we will see that real estate market, especially in the Bay Area stimulated again, I believe, and we'll have better times in the future, but right now, uh, we're projecting about a five percent growth. It's still a growth which is, which is terrific, uh, but it's a far cry from those, uh, eight and nine percent days uh, that we had in the, the, of growth, uh, percentage growth that we saw in the past. Uh, onto fiscal strategies. Um, really, uh, the, the first one is going to be to prioritize fiscal responsibility uh, by applying additional scrutiny to long-term fiscal obligations. Um, we've got the pandemic era funding coming to an end and projected, uh, reductions in, in revenue streams. Um, new funding obligations will be carefully weighed to ensure maximum value and to avoid future, uh, funding cuts. And that's what we're really trying to avoid here. Um, I'm really trying to thread a needle so we don't have to have layoffs. Um, but we will be and I will be asking all departments to look at, uh, and differentiate for me and for our staff the mandated and non-mandated services that we provide, uh, in this county. So what's, what's mandated and then what's above the line? So we have a, uh, a good idea of, uh, of those services and if we have to, we'll look to those, uh, above-the-line services and make, um, and, and bring back to the board recommendations to, uh, balance, uh, the budget if we have further cuts. The county also strives to be innovative, uh, as you know, and, and improve all processes and, and we constantly do that. Uh, we are, uh, bringing in some, um, AI and we're looking to streamlining operations by consolidating functions such as procurement and improving the collaboration, uh, through efforts such as HomeStat where we go in and really, um, it's an accountability tool for us to look at and constantly find gaps in services or shortfalls where we believe that we should, uh, be achieving greater goals. Um, it's something that we bring all the nonprofits in and, um, and really, uh, hold everyone accountable, including ourselves for that long-range goal of this board and that's functional zero and that means getting people out of interim housing into permanent housing. So, uh, we will continue to do that and look for redundant costs within departments and, and really try to get the best value for the dollars that we have. Um, and in the future, we'll come back to this board with an updated reserve policy um, that helps bolster the county, uh, in the face of economic turbulence. Um, but just to give you a preview of that, uh, I will be asking this board to consider moving our reserve policy to fifteen percent. Um, it'll give us more flexibility in those, uh, difficult times. And that will be for another date though, but, uh, at this time, to really get into the numbers, the nuts and bolts of this, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mankia, um, so that, uh, he can really kind of, uh, show you where the dollars are allocated. Mankia.
Thank you, Mr. Calagie. Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, President Slocum. Um, I'm going to give you the numbers and kind of where we're at. I think one of the biggest things that you see within the budget is this change in the amount, um, and it's a big value change. It's six hundred and one million dollars changing from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. A lot of that is actually due, um, to ARPA money that has largely been spent at this point in time. We're not carrying it over like we have in the past. Um, the other portion of that has to do with state grant dollars or federal grant dollars that we've received for the pandemic itself within the departments, um, money that is associated to, um, the emergency response to the storms and fires. Those dollars are all at this point in time being spent and moving forward. We also have, as you know, many capital projects that are actually coming to a close. The medical center project is, um, basically coming closer to its last phase. We have the COB three project next door, um, that is coming closer to the end, um, and resulting in those. So a lot of these dollars are associated with the change in those capital projects and the ARPA funding. But that ARPA dollar and the dollars that were associated with the storms and those grants that we received for fires, um, really were a value that was increasing our budget level. Not to say that this isn't going to change over time and during the September revision that some of this money will not, um, come back into the budget, but at this point in time, that's the biggest change that we have in the budget itself. This is a slide, um, as, um, Mr. Calagie spoke to, this is a slide just showing you what portion of that is considered the general fund, which is what we have, um, more control over within the county. These are all those mandates that we are mandated to provide. Some of the budget adjustments that were made, um, in this budget are really about, like we talked about in the last few slides, is really completing some of our capital projects. The idea behind the completion of these capital projects is really huge. Our current capital outlay in the upcoming budget for twenty-four, twenty-five is three hundred and sixty-one point eight million dollars. Um, that takes into account the wellness center in South San Francisco. It takes into account the Pescadero Fire Station, uh, which will hopefully, um, be worked on here shortly. Um, it takes into account the East Palo Alto Building and, um, finally in completion of that, our COB one property across the way, um, which is needing a little bit of a facelift and some improvement. Um, so those projects are all being included, um, inside of these things. And what it does is it's really looking at how we can better service our residents in spaces that feel comfortable for them to come in to do, um, their work in or have services delivered in. Strengthening the essential services that we have, um, what you see here is we're, we're expanding the Department of Housing with all of the housing that has been added between both the, uh, affordable, um, housing fund and the dollars that were associated to some of the home key purchases of property. We have really needed to stabilize our housing department in some way, shape, or form to really make sure that we're delivering, um, our affordable housing appropriately. The other thing that we've done inside of the budget is really bolster the emergency preparedness to make sure that the county is ready for any major disaster that may come forward. And the other one was establishing a labor standards enforcement, which is included in this budget, um, to make sure that we are really taking care of the citizens that we have. On the side of improving operations, we are, um, transferring our procurement division and responsibilities to better centralize um, and standardize some of the, uh, the kind of pieces around procurement itself throughout the county. And then what we had to do this year, which was a bit different, is augment, um, our fire protection services allocation um, due to circumstances in regards to how property taxes come in for that. We've had to really make sure that we fund, um, some of these things that we've done on wildfire reinforcement and making sure that those things, um, continue going forward into our future. And those are really the way that we're improving some of our operations. Other big change inside of the budget is staffing adjustments. Um, the staffing adjustments that were made, um, as you see here in front of you, fifteen of these positions are actually um, increases in net county cost. The remaining of the thirty-nine positions, overall forty-two, but the remaining of the positions were all done inside of each of the budgets that were out there. So budget and departments really spent time in putting things together. Those fifteen positions that were increased in the net county cost are one to the attorney's office. Um, and that was really to do for government claims. Um, we had the establishment of labor standards, which was two positions and some changes in regards to procurement where we added four. We bolstered DEM by three with the not net county cost and two in the, um, measure K. And then we did this housing support for all of the housing that's out there for five positions and one in our planning department to be able to keep up with the changes that are going on in the community. And as I stated, the remaining portion of those were all part of the department's funding themselves. And the total cost of the add in net county cost is two point six million dollars for those fifteen positions. Measure K is also included in this budget at the current appropriation. Measure K is also included in this budget at the current appropriation of $174.9 million. Of that, 66.5 is rollover. Much of that is in our housing and our Pescadero project, because most of the Middlefield Road has actually been completed at this point in time or spent. 74 million is the ongoing commitments that we've spoken to in the past, and then the 30.5 is part of the NOFO process that was actually going out and a presentation coming to you after the budget presentation. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Kalagi to finish this off.
Thank you, Mr. Mankeah. You could see a quote from Longfellow here that I think sums up where we're at currently. And I'd just like to go back to the staffing adjustments very quickly and just say that, especially in the area of procurement, we believe that this will actually, this investment of the employees will actually save the county money in the long term as we totally revamp the procurement process and look for, again, the best value that we can get for those taxpayer dollars. The other areas, housing, we really took a deep dive into this, and this is obviously a very, very important area for this board. And we found through a deep analysis that they were severely understaffed. We believe that we can do more, quicker, better, and for a better value with the staff there. And then planning was something that this board asked us to add to, and we hope that will make a significant difference as we look for other opportunities in building and planning to really expedite that whole process. We do, and certainly the goal has been and will always be that we want to be a leader in processing those building and planning documents for the public that really sees it as time versus money. So it's important for us to make that investment there. And then emergency services and labor and standards, which we'll talk about later on, were things that this board really has supported. And we believe that, you know, this, by asking for these, it gives me the flexibility to look where we're at in the future and fill these accordingly. It may not be the case where I'm able to fill all of these at once, but it will give me the flexibility as we maybe get better time, into better times, to get a clearer picture of where the economy is going to fill all these positions in the future. And some of the things like the, looking at COB-1 and enhancing the appearance of that building and the functionability of that building for our employees will be also something I'll be looking at and making a determination based on where we are with the economy. That may be something that may have to be deferred. What will not be deferred right now as we sit here is the Wellness Center in South San Francisco. That is something that is greatly needed for the public. We believe that, once built, that will take a strain and relieve the entire system of clinics in the county. We believe that increasing capacity there is the right thing to do for the people in that region, and that is something that we're going to endeavor to get done. With that, I would just like to, again, thank Mr. Mankeah and his entire staff. They are incredible at what they do. We are very lucky to have them there in place, as well as my executive team, who has a lot of put into this, a lot of input into this also, and all the department heads. But really, also, I want to recognize all the employees in this county for choosing a life of public service. They do it so well. They do it with such a great heart, and they understand, and it's something that we preach, that every time that they interact with someone from the public, it may be the only time that person uses our services, and we've got to be at their very best. And that's why we endeavor to create a remarkable experience every time we interact with the public, and in turn, we try to do that every time we interact with our employees. So thank you. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kalagi. Thank you, Mr. Mankeah. Another outstanding job. Thank you to you and your team. We'll turn to board member questions now, and we'll start with Supervisor Pine.
Mr. Kalagi, could you talk a little bit more about your plans for the procurement investments? That's a substantial number of new hires.
Yeah, thank you for that question. We are really revamping that, and it's something that I've really wanted to do for many years now, and create a director position there at a very high level, import more resources into procurement so we can really work with departments on the RFP process, where, you know, the county attorney's been of great assistance in revamping that process to ensure that we have the best process in place anywhere. We've gone out, we've studied this, we hired a consultant to look at the whole procurement process. Quite frankly, the deficit of employees there was in the order of 14 or more. We've had to cut down to where we want to be. But this will also allow us, not only the opportunity to work with departments as we revamp that process and tighten that procurement process, but to get those RFPs out quicker in a more efficient way. We've switched to a new system. But also give us the ability to analyze performance, and that is key to me. You know, we spend billions of dollars a year in contracts, and we need some analysis of the performance of those contracts. You know, obviously, the controller looks at the money side, but we need a more in-depth look at the performance side to make sure that we get the value that we bargained for. And I think that with this new structure in procurement, we'll have an opportunity to do a lot more of that.
Thank you. And then a question about the state budget and the impacts of the reductions there. So do we anticipate in the September revise that we would have to see that ripple through?
Yes, we are going to be analyzing that as soon as the budget's signed, so we can really fully understand what the impacts are to HSA, like CalWorks, and to Medi-Cal. We hope, especially on the Medi-Cal side, that there's not significant impacts, but we know on the behavioral health side, there's likely to be impacts. And what those impacts mean to this county is yet to be determined. And that's why, as part of that exercise, we'll be asking all departments to really identify what's mandated and what's above the line that we do more discretionary, and we'll come back to the board in September with choices and modifications as needed.
Thank you.
Supervisor Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's amazing, the progress that we've made regarding capital. So, you know, I always point back, we look at COB-3. I think the board, as well as the executive, have made a great decision in really looking at how do we fund healthcare in the northern part of the county, especially with this location in South San Francisco. I do think it's going to be a state-of-the-art ability that really provides access to people who have healthcare. And the reason I mention that is when you look at South San Francisco, you look at Daly City, the queue and the lines for some of these folks to get a health appointment can be rather long, a month to two months. So I think how we scale in terms of the delivery of healthcare is extraordinarily important. I do have concerns around the budget deficit. The budget deficit that we're looking at is $56 billion. And as Robert Mankeah has, you know, aptly demonstrated, the county, as many other jurisdictions have done, was we really lived off the ARPA money. And so we sort of, and if I don't know, Robert, if you could pull that slide up, I think it's really compelling, the percentages, percentage of change. When we look at this from where we're at to where we're going, the public should know, yeah, I think it's, there you go. You know, when we look at these, the percentage changes, these are pretty dramatic. And so, you know, as county supervisors, no different than city councils and no different than other bodies, we have a fiscal responsibility to live within our budget and to live within our means. I am concerned about the effects of the state budget. I think I'm concerned about the cuts that the Newsom administration has proposed. We're looking at $340 million potentially over the next two years relative to behavioral health in the Bridge Housing Program. We look at CalWorks, Newsom is proposing, I understand, you know, the budget challenges, a cut of about $127 million to CalWorks, to the mental health and substance abuse services. And so I think how we move forward in September is really going to be critical, and I think this board is going to be faced with difficult choices. And I think it's great that we're putting, you know, making sure that the public is aware of that, because I think the paradigm shift of how we govern as an organization, and again, weaning off these federal and state programs, is going to be vastly different, right? We're going to have to focus on our core, and there may be contractions in other areas. So I would just ask staff to do the following for September and maybe beforehand, and maybe it's through a board members' report. What the, I think it's three things. I think the first is, what's the best-case scenario that we're looking at? Second, what is the worst-case scenario, and what does it mean for the organization? And how do we make those cuts if we need to, or how do we offset that? And then finally, really looking at a couple of things I think we're talking about. You know, obviously, there are other counties and other jurisdictions. We really have to look at our employee costs, right? And so obviously, making sure as we do that, you know, there are other counties that have made significant adjustments. And as you mentioned in your presentation, inflation is at an all-time high. We have workers who unfortunately can't live in this county. In fact, we actually have police officers and firefighters that can't live in this county. And so I know Supervisor Corzo and I last week moved forward with a living wage, but I really need, we really need, and these are tough decisions, but we really need to make sure that we focus on our employees and making sure that they have the adjustments that they're able to live in this county. I mean, we're only as good as our workforce, right? We're only as, and you mentioned it, we're only as good as our workforce. And I think being focused on that and dealing with these inflationary challenges, it's going to be a difficult time, a difficult time for the next several years, that this Board of Supervisors, some will be here, some will not, right? The bottom line is, the way we've governed the last eight or nine years in terms of our budget may be vastly different and challenging. So I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Canepa. Supervisor Corzo?
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you for that, Supervisor Canepa. But really, it's the fiscal prudence that this board has shown over the last several years that put us in a position right now to have a balanced budget and some room for employee negotiations. And it's that fiscal prudence that really will carry the day moving into the future.
Thank you. I just have some clarifying questions. Can you please help me understand? So via left for this year is included in the budget, correct?
It is, but it's actually covering for last year. So it's the money that we're receiving this year to pay for last year. So there's always a year in the rears.
Okay. And the concern is that because there continues to be a lack of interest from the state, we always have to plan as if we won't be receiving it, correct?
Right. So next year, so we're looking at $70 million this year countywide. Next year, what is it, 110, Robert? 114 next year, that we would be owed, that there's no plan to pay us as a county entity.
Thank you. And then, let me find, sorry, let me pull up the right slide here.
And let me qualify that, Supervisor. It's in the budget as it exists right now. Until the governor signs that budget, it's always in jeopardy.
Understood. Can you talk a little bit more about the updated reserve policies and whether that is by department, by, like, you know, the county, the control? Like, what does that mean exactly? Can you break it down more, please?
Right, absolutely. I'll try to do that. So currently, the policy is 2% for the departments, 8% for the county. For a 10% reserve policy, we would be looking to expand that to 15%. I haven't quite had the opportunity to work out that percentage with Mr. Mankeah yet, but we believe that for the next several years, we may need that additional 5% to navigate the rocky waters ahead and some of the fallout of the state budget. We're in good shape right now. We're actually at that level right now, mostly because of the reserves in the departments, quite frankly. So we're in a pretty good position to be able to achieve that immediately and provide for stability into the future.
Thank you. And so just to clarify, the departments have a 2% reserve policy right now?
Reserve requirement.
And some of them are well above that, and that is allowing us to be at the 15?
We're actually, I believe, at 16 right now.
16?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And will the, is the idea that all of the departments have, like, let's say, 5% or the same percent, or will it vary by department?
I think we'll have to look at it by department, because there's some, there's some departments with, you know, very little, the minimum, in there right now, and they really don't have the ability to increase that in any dramatic way. So we'd look at it, we'd look at the system holistically, and one of the things that we've always talked about to the counties is that we're a county made up of several departments, but we're one county, and we look at it in a holistic way.
Thank you. And I wanted to just, you know, referring to the slide that details the additional staff positions, I wanted to take the opportunity to share with the board and with you, County Executive Kalagi, that I personally believe that, you know, for the many, many departments that our county has and all of the millions and billions of dollars that we have, and that we, as a board, are responsible ultimately for approving and reviewing and vetting, et cetera. I don't know if, like, the public really knows that we, as supervisors, each of our individual offices, we actually have, in my opinion, very few staff to give us the bandwidth to really do that the best that we can. So I just wanted to express my interest in maybe creating a subcommittee for the board to explore with county staff what other counties with similar populations have in terms of staffing for their offices. Because as the ones that are responsible ultimately for approving this, I think it's important that we also have the right support to do that. So I want to ask if anyone else is interested in that.
I'm happy to look at it with Supervisor Corzo.
Yeah, we're happy to look at that. And just, I also want the board to know is that, you know, every year, we sit down with the departments and really go through what their needs are and their wants are, and this is a, it's always a very, very difficult, because the department heads are very prudent in what they do, and it's very unfortunate that we can't give them prudent in what they do and and it's very unfortunate that we can't give them everything that they that they want. And they always find a way through and and they're very gracious about it. But to give you an idea, I think that we had at least 60 or 70 positions requested and we had to narrow that down to those that we just felt were absolutely essential. So we're very judicious in in going through the the request. And it's hard to say no because they're all well intentioned and and they add value, but there's got to be a value decision made someplace and and that's what we try to bring to the board.
Thank you. And just for the sake of the public, in terms of our offices, I believe three of us are staffed at three and a half positions and two are staffed at four and a half, just so folks are aware. I had another question about, and actually, do we have to vote on that on, you know, two board members being interested in exploring that with county staff?
I don't think there's a need for a vote, but I think it'd just be acknowledged that Supervisors Corzo and Mueller will be working with staff on that on that issue.
Thank you. So I had a question about the about the Measure K rollover of 66 million. Can you, is that, do we typically have a rollover for Measure K?
We have a rollover every year for Measure K. And it's basically due to the way money moves. So we've made obligations for like, the Pescadero Fire Stations over the course of years. It's $21 million. That value has to be rolled over year over year until the project kicks off and goes. So it's been minimally spent to this point in time. It started at about 23 million by the time everything was said and done. There's some water work that's been done, but the actual project hasn't completely gone forward. The same thing with the Affordable Housing Fund. Those dollars become obligated, but until tax credits and everything else is done for a housing project, the actual dollar doesn't move out. It's just a promissory note or an obligation so that they can go and garner these other pieces of the puzzle that will then, once they have all the pieces and begin construction, then this money begins to move. That's the bulk of what you see within that 66 million that's moving.
Thank you. And then I had a bunch of other questions, but they're very specific for departments. So maybe I do that offline. That might be a better use of everyone's time. Let me see if I can, I think I have like, maybe one more. Okay. Actually, so just in terms of the streamlining of, oh my goodness, of streamlining of operations, will that process kind of be done individually by department?
Are we talking about for the procurement process?
No, for the fiscal strategy, just the overall fiscal strategy?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It'll be done by department, department by department. And really looking at, first, we're looking at, in fact, I think a request went out today for those mandated services and those that are above the line, more discretionary. But we will, we constantly look at the operations of departments to see if there are more efficient ways to to do business. I mean, nothing stays the same forever and I'm hope that we're that organization that constantly looks for improvement and constantly looks at change for a better way to to do things. And I know that health in particular, I mean, has a whole lean process that they really, I know it had an impact on me as a story I told to the President of the Board the other day and the way I think of things. But I think that we, you know, we have to do that throughout the organization and really look for the most efficient, effective way to do to do government. And that's sometimes getting out of the traditional way of doing things and in thinking in a different way of of how we can be more effective and efficient.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah. So at the outset, I just wanted to go ahead and indicate that how much I appreciate the work with the current, the current climate and the state budget obviously is concerning, but more concerning is that that's really reflective of the economic environment that our residents are living in. And right now, across the board, if you look at the inflationary data and what's happening in the economy, it's not good. And so what I really want to stress on this, and I think it's important to share is, as you, we look at this outlook going forward, I think what's really important is that we look at, unfortunately, there's going to be the question of whether we go to measure or how do we, how do we go ahead and pick up revenue? And at the outset, what I want to say to county staff is, I'm not interested in going to ask the taxpayers for my money. So right now, what I hear across the board in my different cities and in my different unincorporated areas is our taxpayers are feeling it more than ever. Inflation has taken more out of their checkbook than that than they've seen in salary wage increase and people are hurting from that. And if you look at how that's extrapolated across the margin, those in our county who have the least are being hurt the most by it. You're looking at food prices going up 27% and higher over the last two years. You're seeing, and you're seeing just across the board, and when we talk to our small business owners and Supervisor Slocum, and I did that recently, they are being hit by this disproportionately. They just don't have the money. And so as we look at how we're going to fill these gaps, and I hate to say it, but today we're looking at Measure K and how we're giving out Measure K monies, folks need to understand that the county may need in the future not to be making as Measure K grants because that tax was originally passed in order to go ahead and make sure we can deliver services at the county. We've had a lot of very great years where we've been able to go ahead and share that back out into the community, but we need to give people advance notice that to shore up our budget deficits and make sure that we're able to go ahead and provide services, the critical county services that we're going to go ahead and may need to go ahead, give people advance notice. We may be needing to give less of that out and keeping that in house. And that's to go ahead and make sure that we protect the operations of the county. And so to provide those services to those in need. And so those are uncomfortable things to talk about, but I want to be as transparent as possible with people as I look at this budget, what I see coming down the line. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, you're lit up there? Do you want to comment? No? Okay. Well, let me take a moment and again, thank Mr. Manquia and his team for another outstanding budget preparation process. I have one, two, three, four, quick, easy, no stress questions. Maybe a comment from my very long tenure with the county. There was a time in the past when we tried this mandatory versus discretionary listing from departments. And it, you can go back and look at the records and maybe you have, but my recollection is that really went nowhere because most of us, and I'm guilty, just said back to the county executive, they're all mandatory. They're all mandatory. In one way or another, they're all mandatory. Anyway, I'm throwing that out for your consideration, maybe look back through a historical record. I have some serious concerns about that, but
I will do that, yes.
Let me move on. I'm curious about why the logic behind moving purchasing to the county executive's office and why not some other location or is this temporary? Is this temporary, for instance? But I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Our study that we had done, we we looked at other operations around the Bay Area when it came to procurement. And it's such an important department. The one thing that they noted that was glaring was how far removed it currently was from the county executive's office and how other counties have it either as a standalone department or directly under the county executive and attached to the county executive. It's really that important because of the amount of oversight that's necessary in in that process of billions of dollars going out the door for for public purposes and trying to get the best value for the dollar every time. So we we looked at that, we really took that to heart and 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 not that it was in a bad place, it was in HR, it was, so it was kind of a two or three steps removed from the county executive's office and they did a great job over there. But really, for best practices purposes, we feel that it needs to be directly under the the county executive's office. And I've asked, I've taken the unusual step of asking Mr. Manquia, who's the CFO, to oversee the department head in this. That typically doesn't occur, but to me, the synergy is connected to the budget in a way that there seems to be a streamlined approach to that. Certainly, we believe that, I believe that someday will certainly be a standalone department, you know, with the with the other departments, but this is a process that's necessary. With that standalone, there'll need to be more funding because there's the fiscal side of things that that in support side of things, administrative side of things that will need to be put in place there. But this is kind of the middle ground where it gets it closer to the county executive offices for best practices purposes and gives us a clearer oversight and a direct line to their operations.
Thank you for that. I certainly don't mean to be argumentative about this.
I didn't take it that way at all.
But it's, I'm, my major concern is that we're moving more and more programs, functions, responsibilities to the county executive's office. And the degree to which Robert Manquia, his time spent on managing this new unit, is that the best use of his time? In other words, my perspective is keep folks like Mr. Manquia, and I'm not trying to single him out, but focused on their key mission, which is the financial health of this county and what's happening a year from now or two years from now, rather than supervising a group of purchasing agents. You might want to respond to that. That's just my personal feeling is that there's this ever-expanding county executive's office and I have concerns about that because it takes those deputies away potentially from that core mission and puts them off into their attention in other areas.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that. And we'll, we will look at that as this progresses. But right now, it appears that they're so interconnected that it's a good place for it and probably the best practice. But we're happy to to keep examining that and I'll keep evaluating Mr. Manquia's time to see how much time is spent on that.
He's already here weekends and nights, for God's sakes.
Hey, there's always holidays too, you know, so, you know.
All right, thank you. Just one last thing, one point on that, one last point on that is, I really value like, monitoring these contracts to make sure that the vendors are giving us the goods that we were promised. To me, that's like a critical path, number one. And so the question comes up, and you don't have to answer it now, but it's like, why aren't the budget analysts doing that kind of work versus the purchasing department? We can talk about this offline, but that's a concern I have also. The 10 positions that are on this chart for health, are those all related to Epic?
I believe so, yes. Oh, no? No? Oops.
How many?
Oh. Go ahead if you've got information on it or Louise, mental health, I guess.
Excuse me for that. I'm in the habit of interrupting you.
We want, we, we certainly want accurate information.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I was reminding myself of that this morning when I saw the slides. So actually, these are positions that were added previously, and so this is the reconciliation board and they are funded, but it was the care court positions that were, thanks to the good work of the courts and behavioral health and many others launching in a few weeks. So there were positions for the care court as well as the homeless engagement assistance and linkage team that work in the community in partnership with the hot team. So you're right to recall that we did add a lot of positions for Epic, but that was in a prior, that was in a prior budget.
Thank you for that. I understand that completely. Thank you. My last, just request, I guess it's a request, is if, Mr. Callagie, could you give us at some later point in time, a report from all the departments on their use of AI technologies today and what's planned for the future? And kind of translate that for us into what does that mean for the workforce? I remember Supervisor Mueller, and we adopted a resolution regarding, skips my memory right now, what's that called? AI tech, no.
Yeah, it was AI.
Was it AI? We did adopt that policy, but I'd like to know really what's going on in Department land and what's planned, if we were to be able to estimate costs and so forth, that would be of interest also, so.
Absolutely. I will, I will get that that list for you, but I'd also like to bring back at least two departments, the accessory recorder and the building and planning, to give this board a presentation in a study session to show you what they are doing in their latest endeavors, but I'll also get you a list of the other ones. And just to reiterate that, that AI will not, and according to the policy, can't displace current workers from their positions. So I just want to make that clear that we, we won't ever be doing that, but we will be using AI into the future for a more effective, efficient processing and hopefully make our employees work easier and and more efficient. But I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I don't have any other questions or comments. Anybody want to follow up? Okay. Suki, public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have several speakers from chambers and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. I'll start with Stacy Howard, followed by Evan Milburn. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then no speakers from chambers for this item. So Madam Clerk, please. Madam Clerk?
Apologies, Mr. Clerk. We do have one hand raised for Carlisle and Young. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri. I guess I was just listening in and thinking, you know, we have such an awesome budget that it's a lot to deal with, but a couple of things came up. You know, if we're in this situation, we're one of the wealthiest counties in the state, that stands to reason that a lot of the other counties around us will be trimming back their budgets. And when it comes to our homeless budget, I know it's not, you know, it's part of housing, but there's two new RVs near my house that are just recently parked within a mile of Supervisor Mueller's Coastside office. And I, I mean, I don't monitor that. I did volunteer during the homeless count earlier this year, but I haven't seen the projections of how that count came out countywide. But on the mid-coast, we do have some homeless, but they're mostly vehicle dwellers. And I guess my question is, how do we decide, you know, if they're locals or if they've come from another county because we have a good program? And, you know, I think it's upon the taxpayers to fund the locals first, but I don't know if there's any way you guys can figure that out. And as for hospitals, I think there's quite a few hospitals in Daly City and South San Francisco, yet they're getting a new facility and the coast is just getting, you know, a part-time clinic. So I guess to me, I think we're always last over here on the coast and we don't have any hospitals because Seton Coastside closed down. And I know the county has given Seton Hospital in the past and many different ownerships lots of money. So maybe Hospital in the past in many different ownerships lots of money. So maybe at some point, you guys can consider building a facility over here like you're doing for South San Francisco that already has many facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carlisle. No further hands, Mr. President.
Very good. So we're needing a motion here?
We'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the FY 2024-2025 recommended budget submitted by the county executive.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
And Rokol?
Sir President Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Sir President Corzo.
Yes.
Sir President Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Sir President Canepa.
Yes.
And President Sokum.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move to item number two, Measure K, adopt a resolution approving recommendations for proposed programs and services pursuant to FY 2425, Measure K. NOFOs as set forth in Attachment A in authorizing the county executive or his designate to negotiate agreements with the recommended applicants and/or conduct further solicitations as necessary and advisable within the discretion of the county executive to be returned to the board for approval. And there's a B part, reallocating $4 million of Measure K funds to cover the gaps in affected county services within board priority areas of children, families, seniors, housing and homelessness, and emergency preparedness, which proposed appropriations will be included in the September revisions to our recommended budget.
Thank you, President Sokum, members of board. I'll kick this off and start by saying, thank you for your efforts, the subcommittee's efforts on this, and all of Measure K. This is one of the most arduous, complicated, difficult processes that we have ever gone through. And it's been about 10 years since, since we've done it in the past, and certainly more money was at stake here. But it was something that was absolutely necessary to be done because nothing stays the same for that period of time. And it was very important to evaluate where we're at and the needs of the community and how these dollars would be best spent. Let me start by saying that there is no question that we, especially in this area of children, families, and seniors, had many, many great applications. I believe 232 applications total for asking for $158 million. And we know we had a fraction of that to spend. I would have loved to have had to the opportunity to, to invest in all of these great requests because it's all about helping people. But certainly, the economic realities just didn't allow for that. I do want to thank, to start with, Mr. Mankeah and his team, and Justin Mates, and Eliana, and Adam, for all their efforts in organizing and going out to the community. We started this 18 months ago, this process. I'll never forget that first meeting in the room where we decided to do this with the subcommittee. 18 months of going out into community meetings and trying to find out the priorities of the community, and then going out with the NOFOs and receiving those requests back and working with the nonprofits who we value so much because we could not do what we do without them. And making those tough decisions and all our department heads and others who sat in those meetings to, to decide what would go forward. It is just so difficult trying to balance the needs of the community. And again, thank you to the subcommittee who was there with us, trying to help us balance those needs and move this forward. So with that, I'll have Mr. Mankeah talk about the specifics. But again, I just want to thank everyone who was involved in the process, though very, very difficult, absolutely necessary that, that we did this and recalibrated and reallocate these funds. Mr. Mankeah?
Thank you, Mr. Callagie. One of the things I'd like to add is that, you know, one of the things that we talk about is that there were 232 applications for approximately $160 million just in children, families. So, you know, one of the things is that 75% of all of the applications that we received in were for this one category. And I think it's important because, you know, one of the things that we really had to do was really had to dig in and really find a way of, of looking at these in many different ways. So one of the things that, because of this high number, we had to really begin to take applications and look at them in a few different categories, in a wide range of programs, so that they, there was six categories or different review points that were put together. And each of the relevant experiences and expertise took place in each of these different areas that you see here. So you see workforce, childcare, senior programming, health and mental health clinics, youth enrichment, and then other, which was kind of this, this category where we had to really look back at what was going on. And it was really due to the NOFO. The idea that when you put out a NOFO, you want to allow everybody to express what it is that they want to do without a lot of kind of RFP background behind it, where you're filling out 160 to, you know, 200 pages of documents to get them turned in. We really wanted to give everybody the opportunity to, to put their name in and see what was out there at that point. The actuary reviews were conducted by these panels was very similar to the panels that reviewed all the other applications. It was just done in a little bit of a different light. The panels weighed the same general factors such as degree of innovation, presented of the proposal, proven track record, delivering effective services, whether the program fills a gap, et cetera. So we really spent a lot of time in each of these groups really kind of weighing what was really important. As we saw in the recommendations back in March as well, there were some instances where the panels recommended that the following solicitation would be done. So there was a lot of things where you saw that maybe one direct service provider wanted something in East Palo Alto, just to use that as an example. And then you kind of began to see that that was a service that maybe was needed at a broader breadth throughout the entire county. So some solicitation ideas came about within this NOFO. So one of the things that I also want to make sure is of the 16 million that was originally put out, 3 million was already approved in March. And this was for the Samaritan House. This is for the emergency financial assistance with a certain dollar value going to seniors was approved. And then Second Harvest Silicon Valley for the $2 million associated with them to keep food moving within our being. That was already approved on the March 26th meeting and is already part of the budget itself. From there, I really want to speak to each of these kind of different areas and kind of where we're at. So I'm going to kind of just go through them and give you a real brief sentence in regards to each of them so that you do have a little bit of background on what's there more than just the service portion. So this program that you see here, which is the Four Seas of San Mateo, this program helps childcare centers with capital projects needed to, for expansion and licensing requirements that the county has supported for a number of years. And this grant would provide some continuation of that funding, not entirely what they requested, but some continuation of that funding. The next one, you see Coastside Pride. This program addresses the relatively limited support and resources available for the LGBTQ plus community on the coast, particularly for youth. So that was one of the other ones. The Daly City Youth Health Center, this program is recommended because it is important peer leadership, behavioral health, and substance use prevention for youth in North County. Family Caregiver Alliance, this program is recommended out of equity considerations to help this organization, which supports family caregivers for older adults, better understand how they can improve their reach into historically underserved communities. Fresh Lifelines for Youth, this recommendation funding to assist the longstanding partners working with justice-involved youth to fill its funding gap from other funding sources. Friends for Youth Incorporated, this is recommended to support the operation and expansion of a key program providing mentoring support, not just counseling, to at-risk youth in the county. Institute on Aging, this recommendation continues current funding level for the key service addressing emotional health of older adults. Live in Peace, program recommended to provide some continue, continuity of funding for this innovative approach to support academic at-risk youth in Palo Alto. Peninsula Family Services, this is door-to-door transportation was one of the most specific community program alternatives that came out of the community engagement efforts and is recommended will allow PFS to expand their services to seniors to more cities across the county. Peninsula Family Services, this was recommended in part out of equity considerations as PFS is looking to continue to expand its peer counseling services to seniors specifically in underserved communities. Pivotal Connections, this is a key support program administered by HSA to support foster youth in the county with high school and early career navigation success. Ravenswood Family Healthcare Network, this program embodies an innovation in-house professional development program that provides professional training and employment opportunities to community members, served by Ravenswood Family Health Network. Here you see some of the solicitations. It's well-recognized that we don't have enough folks in our childcare workforce to address the childcare needs in our county. And an investment in the vocational and educational system that train that workforce could be a force multiplier. While we had some applications that proposed certain parts of such a program, we recommend a further solicitation to more specifically identify program parameters and get a provider who can deliver at an appropriate scale. Another solicitation, this is capacity building. This recommendation recognizes the small home daycare providers are an important source of childcare and need more support. But given our panel feels that the further solicitation was needed to better articulate program parameters and get a provider who can serve the entire county. The next one, our panel identified need for some services for this population, but applications received didn't quite hit the mark in terms of innovation. We recommend a solicitation here to identify a provider who can serve those with severe autism with vocational and educational supports to help them and their families gain more independence. A master plan. Our plan identified a need for more services for this population by applications received didn't, oh, sorry. This plan, which will extend the state's master plan for aging effort and bringing it to a local level, will identify where the gaps are in supports for older adults and inform future programming in this area. This funds both the plan and two years of implementation. And the last one is a blueprint for school and transition age use well-being is being concurrently developed by a coalition of stakeholders in the county, and when complete will represent the best thinking on our local gaps in youth mental health services. This recommendation is to set aside three years of funding for recommendations that come out of that effort. The DV system, this plan will give us a better understanding of where the gaps and opportunities are in our current system of care and support the DV victims. This recommendation funds the study of two and two years of implementation of recommendations. The next solicitation was enforcement efforts. This recommendation is to support the enforcement efforts of a new OLSA, that's our Office of Labor Standards. And then the last solicitation that we have here is a culturally and linguistic appropriate approach was a specific identified priority of respondents to our NOFO survey. This recommendation builds on outreach lessons learned during the last census and the pandemic to create a network of community organizations who can assist with outreach across all of our communities. Then the last two is Special Olympics. This recommendation would help continue and expand opportunities for San Mateo County youth to participate in the Special Olympics program. And then Star Vista, this is the continue, this recommendation maintains current support for family resource centers and child abuse prevention services in key schools across the county. That is all of our recommendations, and we are able to take questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mankeah. We'll turn to board member questions, and we'll start with Supervisor Mueller.
I actually don't, I don't have any questions. The only thing, the only thing recently that came up that I had that I wanted to actually ask county council about was, is there something that we can put into the Measure K contracts that indicates that if the county gives a grant to a nonprofit to go ahead and do this work, that an employee of that nonprofit running for office can't then refer to working in that Measure K area? And the reason that comes up is because I've been, there are some concerns that you wouldn't want supervisors giving money to an organization to help assist a political campaign.
You know, we can certainly explore that as supervisor, and it seems like, you know, off the top of my head, it seems like something that we could in fact include. We'd want to do a little bit of work just to make sure we're not running afoul of
Some First Amendment.
First Amendment considerations. But, but if that's direction, we'll certainly explore it. And we can, frankly, it might not be a bad thing for us to consider more broadly with respect to county contracts writ large. But let us, let us do some work on that.
Just some good government thoughts. And then finally, I know that there's been discussions about immigration defense not being in it. I just wanted to go ahead and let folks know that within my district, my office does plan on bringing a discretionary Measure K in order to shore that up in my district. But that's certainly something that comes out of that, that budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just want to say to Supervisor Mueller's point, I think we need to be really careful about that. We, we do have an incoming supervisor who did receive Measure K discretionary funds. And so if we're going to have those conversations, I think we should have them holistically and recognize kind of past practices and like getting into murky waters and like, how is that even enforced? And who makes, like, it's, I'm a little concerned about it.
President, President Sokum, just with respect to Supervisor Corzo's comment, I agree that we, we want to be very diligent in terms of how we look into this and careful about it. And perhaps the next, a good next step would be some form of a members memo, maybe laying out what our research is on the point.
Thank you. So regarding Measure K, oh goodness, sorry, my notes got all, let me find my place on my notes here. Okay. So one of my, can, can someone please kind of explain the process that, like, review the process that the county went through to make these recommendations? Because as county supervisors, I don't know about my colleagues, but I know I personally have been getting emails and outreach asking, you know, why we, we made recommendations. And we are, we will and are ultimately responsible for approving these recommendations. But I want people to understand that we did not review the applications, the supervisors did not go application through application. So I think it's important for the public to understand what that process was like.
So the process has been the same all the way through. So each of the areas had panelists that we brought in, some from the outside, a lot of county staff, just for the simple fact that they do have an expertise in many of these, these areas, also understand the contracting process and the other things that are out there. But we did bring outside people into this as well. And then really sat down with experts that understood these areas to try to go through each and every application. And every single application on all of the different groups were gone through. So all 315 applications in total were read and gone through by these individual areas of focus. And what we really wanted to do is spend time in each of those areas, and it was days. It was not done in a singular day type process. If it was, that was an eight-hour day, and I think that was emergency preparedness was the one-day one. Most of them took over the course of time to get this done. So all of these panels were kind of put together. As, as Mr. Callagie stated, the executive team was actually at the helm of running these groups so that we had some people in the space so that we could make sure that the expertise was there. And without having all of the knowledge and the background that our experts had, it really brought forward some questions that had to be asked by the larger multitude of groups. So all the applications were gone through, nothing was left out. We went through everything. And, and just as I stated kind of at the beginning, and I think Mr. Callagie stated it as well, the difficulty here is the fact that there were a lot of great applications. It's not the fact that we weren't getting the applications that we thought we were going to get. There was a lot of really good applications, but there's only There was a lot of really good applications, but there's only so much money. If you really think about the value, just in this alone, we had 10% of what was requested, right? 10% of what was requested at the beginning, $16 million of 160 million, which was the request. And that had to go through 232 applications. So it was really this idea of how do we then get the, the best bang for the dollar for the area on what we heard from both the public side, from the board, from the CBOs and others, and that was all brought in. As you heard when I gave you the brief little kind of summaries, there was a lot of thought in regards to what did the public actually request? So when you look at transportation for seniors, that was something that was right there upfront that was stated that was really needed. So as an example, that's kind of how these, these conversations went on. And it was a lot of conversation. It was a lot of sitting. It was a lot of digging in. It was a lot of question asking by others within the room to get to the, the requests that we have here.
Thank you. And so just to clarify, the panels then made recommendations for which applications to move forward, correct?
Correct. The panels did make the recommendations for these.
Thank you. And in terms of the applications, one of the things that I was curious about, you know, and I, and I'm looking at a couple of the recommended, recommended proposals. And I'm, and I'm wondering, you know, were there kind of equity impact statements for, for those in the applications? Or could we, if there weren't, could we make sure that we have some of those in the contracts? Because for example, I'm concerned that some of the programs that we are recommending for approval, like specifically the ones that are up for being expanded, like are they serving the right people, right? Are they serving our most vulnerable? Or are they providing, you know, more access to, to, to people in the community, which is great, but maybe not necessarily the people that need it the most?
So in the NOFO, there was some equity answers and questions that did come through through the NOFO process. But in all of our contracts for Measure K going forward, they will all have equity statements inside of them. So that we verify that we are, are meeting our equity goals as well.
Okay. So for example, just generally like what I am interested in, and I'd be curious to see if my colleagues are on board with this is, you know, for basically all of the proposals, you know, I think it's important that we do try to have a broad impact, but I think it's more, more important to make sure that we have an impact on folks that wouldn't otherwise have access. So, and I don't want to call out any specific application, but generally I think that, you know, as a county, we try to be equity minded and make sure that we are providing resources to those that don't have other options. So I, I would like for that to be included in, in the contracts in some way. And I'm not referring to specifically doing means testing, but it could be as simple as like, you know, on like adding a question to applications when people apply to these different programs or services where they self disclose, you know, what kind of income level they're in and, and, you know, I don't think that they should have to, you know, provide all of their financial information if that hasn't been the practice in the past. But I, I do, I'm not interested in Measure K funds going to, to folks that don't really need that, right? I know that was kind of wordy, but I, I'm hoping that folks kind of understand what I'm getting at here.
We, we will include an equity statement in all of our contracts.
Yes, but an equity statement is not the same as like.
It's, it's going to probably be something we're going to have to look at in regards to performance and that kind of trail. So we'll go back and look into it with staff and we will talk to the attorneys and figure out how we can include something in there that gets to, I think, where you want to go.
Okay. And is that something that my colleagues are interested in as well?
Yes. There's, there are a couple of programs in there that I saw that I actually had the same thought. Like I wonder if we're just, if, I wonder if there's going to be any sort of tracking of whether or not money's going to actually individuals in need or not. So, but we can visit that with County Council afterwards and talk about that, so.
Thank you. And so my next question was for the items that were noted as recommended for negotiation, are those all being recommended at those exact amounts or is that kind of open to discussion in the negotiation?
So the value that you see on the documents you have in front of you gets us to the $9 million, which is what we have to spend. But obviously there's going to be some negotiation that has to happen just for the simple fact that many of these were actually financially toned down to be able to fit within the $9 million and we're not giving 100% of what was already placed on their NOFO application. So a lot of those will have to be negotiated just to even get to the values that we have in front of us here to, to make sure they fit. In totality, we have to fit within this $9 million or $9.1 million that we have. So that's going to have to be part of the process in getting there. But maybe some of the solicitations change in value just to make sure everything aligns.
Thank you. And so what happens if let's say through the negotiation process, we, there are some Measure K funds left on the table? What happens then?
I, I don't believe that to be the case, but we would be coming back to the board with another recommendation from the, the list to be moved up.
But to your point Supervisor, I mean, some of these organizations who have put in bids may say they can't do it for the amount that, that we've offered them and that money would then become, go back into the pot. And we'd ask this board to, we'd meet with the subcommittee again and, and, and try to reallocate those funds and bring it back and board input on those funds.
Thank you. Okay, I'm almost halfway through my questions. So one of the things that I really appreciate about this new process, and I promise this will be a question, is that there, the amount of applications that we received is actually a good thing because people are now more aware that these funds are there, that they can apply, that they exist. But that also means that many, many people and organizations were disappointed with the ultimate recommendations because they were not recommended for funding. And I, you know, because this process has, has been new for everyone involved, I think it's important that we have a clear pathway for people to provide feedback. Because I don't know if I'm alone here, I'm sure I'm not, but I've been getting feedback. I've been, you know, hearing about frustrations and, and what people wished was, was different about the process. And I want there to be a place for folks to provide that feedback that is more streamlined than just going to their individual supervisors. So can you talk about what kind of feedback loop there is now and maybe what we can do differently going forward?
Yeah, absolutely. We're very interested in that feedback. We want to, I mean, I don't think we'll go through this process, you know, every, every year by any stretch of the imagination, but we do want to learn from this process and continue to get better at everything we do. So we will endeavor to send a survey out. We want to know what people liked about the process. We want to know where we can improve in the process. We know the feeling of disappointment. We often put in for grants to the state or federal government and, you know, with new programs or great ideas and, and don't get funded. And so we understand that disappointment, but we also understand there's a process and every time you're not going to get funded. So, but we want to get better. We'll, we'll put that information out there and, and I'm always, always open to any feedback that anyone wants to give me personally. And that is part of my job to make sure that we do this better every time.
Thank you. So one of the categories that I noticed is not on the recommended list that I'm very concerned about is human trafficking. And so I, I want, I was wondering if, if someone can share what the thinking on that was and and, and what the plan is for funding that work because it is, I think, critical.
Yeah, Supervisor, thank you for that question. There has been some questions about that. And we, we're certainly not making a, a value decision about human trafficking, which I believe that we all, all know is important. The question is, did it, did it rise above any of these other categories? And was there another mechanism for it to be funded? So we do believe that this is a function of the sheriff's office that certainly could be, could be funded within the sheriff's budget. And that would be a call by the sheriff that the sheriff would have to make in determining if her budget afforded that. But it, we believe that there is that opportunity there. And based on the numbers that, that we were seeing and, and, and the activity in this county, that there were other higher priorities within, within this NOFO that, that needed to be funded.
Thank you. So just to clarify, there hasn't been an explicit commitment from the sheriff to fund this work?
That's right.
Okay.
We're certainly, certainly happy to talk to the sheriff about that and, and point out where it may come from.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I will definitely be sharing my support for that being included in the sheriff's budget. And I would encourage like the public to express that concern as well. I do recognize that while numbers in our county have kind of appeared on the lower side, there was a huge human trafficking operation in our county a couple of years ago. I know because I worked for Golden Gate Regional Center at the time and I think it was Rainbow, 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 it wasn't Rainbow, right? It was something Rainbow. But, but it was a huge operation and it was in our county, but it was run by the state and so maybe not included in our numbers. But, you know, in, in wealthy communities and counties, I think it is very prevalent more than people realize. So I, I am very much in support of the county, whether it's through the sheriff's office or through other means supporting this work. And honestly, on an ongoing basis, not just a one-time Measure K grant. Okay, so I am at my last question. So I think it's, you know, we've heard advocacy from many of our immigrant right organizations and, you know, expressing the need for immigration defense. And I, I honestly believe that is very much a need for our county's most vulnerable. And, you know, recognizing that those were not recommended for, for approval at this point. Can, can you please share a little bit about, you know, what the thinking is? And, and I know that, you know, I know there will be meetings with folks leading those organizations in the coming weeks. But I know there are folks here who are interested in understanding kind of what the thinking is.
Yeah, absolutely. We, and we, you know, believe this is also very important work and, and that our partners, Stacy and everyone's done a great job. All the other nonprofits involved in this have done a great job. Really what we hope to do is, is, is have an opportunity to sit down with the organizations and really kind of figure out a path forward. There is funding still in place. I believe it's $850,000 for this, for this coming year. And we hope to sit down with legal aid and, and all of those involved in immigration defense and really figure out how do we move forward in a, in a way that makes sense for everywhere? Where we are able to track the success of, of legal aid in this, in this field and allocate the resources in a, in a comprehensive but more defined way to ensure that there's the value there. And, and again, this is not unlike any other one that we'll be looking at here and really looking at the value of, of the programs that are offered. So I think we just need that opportunity to sit down with legal aid and in the other organizations and really figure out what that looks like going forward. But we're certainly, we're certainly, in fact, I believe it's on the calendar that we, we've got that planned for the near future.
I think so. Okay, those are my questions. Also, it was Rainbow Bright. I did remember that correctly. Yeah, I'll just wrap up and say, I want to thank everyone that was involved in the process. I know that there are many folks in the community that are concerned and worried that they weren't granted funding. But I, I, I think that there are still ways to support those organizations and there will be opportunities in, in the future. So I just want to kind of extend my, my thoughts to folks who, you know, felt disappointed with the, with the results and the recommendations. But I, I do think that these recommendations are in line with what came out of the extensive community engagement process. And yeah, and, and there's more work to do. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Robert. Can you, can you just remind us and then just for the public about the extensive outreach? I'm talking about going into communities around the town halls, talking about the surveys. I, I think one of the things that we sort of, we sort of do is, you know, really don't focus on the, the, the community outreach. I think it's important for the public to know what was done in terms of our outreach efforts.
So in the summer of 2023, we spent the whole later end of July, the whole month of August and a small portion of the beginning of September in the communities. We did nine sessions around the county in total. And we met with community members and got gathered and garnered information. We did not garner it ourselves. We had an outside consultant come in to be able to facilitate those meetings and so that people felt maybe a little bit more comfortable in having conversation. We got a lot of feedback. In fact, if you look at our Measure K website, which is where a survey will be coming up for feedback. But if you look at the Measure K website, you can actually see some of those sessions and briefings of people that were at those sessions, being able to talk about how they felt about the session and what was going on. And again, those were not done by us. These were all captured by people there and people had the distinct opportunity to say either way, which way they felt about the session. And we brought all of those to life on our Measure K website. So those are all out there, but we spent that entire month. We also did some outreach to the CBOs at a session that we held at the middle of July. We also went to departments and asked them for information in regards to this. And then again, with the departments as part of the panels, making sure that we had the right people on the panels to be able to make some of these decisions. So that's been the process. As Mr. Calgie said, it started a very long time ago and kind of has been, has been moving ever since.
Talk a little bit about the survey.
Which survey?
The survey that was sent out.
The survey that was, so that wasn't sent out, we actually went and did surveys in front of grocery stores in some of our more needy areas to make sure that we garnered input from people that would otherwise not be there. So we asked community organizations to come out with us. We sat in front of stores and gas stations. We offered, we offered ice cream tickets to people to be able, I, I know that sounds weird, but we, we offered, you know, to have somebody go and get an ice cream after if they would come with us and fill out this, this survey. And those surveys and all the information that we gathered from those surveys are also on our Measure K website so that people can see. There was 2,300, 2,400, off the top of my head, respondents across the board between the events and the surveys that we did. But we only did the surveys in those areas of focus. So we wanted to make sure that we got into some of our unincorporated areas that normally don't have respondents there. And, and really wanted to make sure we heard from the people that are more hesitant in coming out and speaking to us.
Can you, you, you touched upon it, but I think it's important. Could you talk about the meetings that your staff had, has conducted with Thrive Alliance and the CBOs? I've heard a lot of positive feedback about how the county has communicated through these means. Can you kind of, just for the public, talk about how that, those meetings went and the, the communication throughout the process in terms of informing the CBOs?
So we had two meetings with the CBOs through Thrive. We did one of them in July of '23 and then we did another one closer to the time that the NOFO was going to be put out in November so that people had an understanding of where we were at. We've also met with Thrive and we've been putting out documents to all of the CBOs that applied for the NOFO. We've tried to keep everybody informed. One of the lags that happened to us during this period was where there were so many applications for this children, family and seniors portion, which had again, 75% of all of the applications inside of it, that took us which had, again, 75% of all of the applications inside of it, that took us a stretch longer. So there there was a little bit of a void in some communication, just trying to get everything put together to get that done. But we've been trying to communicate as much as possible. We send an email out at least once a month to all of the providers or all the CBOs that and NOFO applicants to make sure that there's an understanding of where we're at. On Friday, we sent one about this meeting. The week before, we sent one about where we were kind of at to make sure everybody understood. So we've been really trying to get as much information out there. I think communication is always something that we strive for, but can always be improved at the same time.
And finally, before I just wrap up, Mr. Mankia, how long have you worked for the county for?
This is my 28th year.
It's your 28th year. I've been here at the county. I think this is my eighth year. Would you would you say that this was probably the most robust outreach that you've seen as a as a budget director?
So for the purposes of the budget, yes, I think this is something that has been very robust that the county has has been doing. There have been other efforts, don't get me wrong, when you think about, you know, where we were at 20 some odd years ago and people were looking at our goals and commitments. I think there was a lot of effort around that. So I don't, I think we've done this in a sense before. But I do think that this, when it came to a budget, was probably one of the most most outspoken or or outside end that we've we've taken yet.
You know, let me just say this. In my, I've been been a legislative aide, I've been in government. This is by far the most robust community outreach plan I've ever seen. Our staff, and not just you, Mr. Mankia, Mr. Caligy, but we've had staff that went out to the coast, we've had staff. We've dedicated a lot of hours to make sure that we reached everyone. And sometimes in these processes, that's not the case. And I think when you look at the investment that is made, you know, there is a focus on those who are most vulnerable. I sit on the subcommittee with Supervisor Pine. When you make decisions like this, they're not easy decisions. You're going to, because everyone has priorities and the board has identified priorities. Mr. Mankia, can you can you run us through the five priorities that the board's identified?
So the three main priorities that the board identified was emergency preparedness, was children, family and seniors as one specific area. Housing and homelessness was another area. And then mental health, which was strewn throughout the entirety of all of those different groupings that I just spoke to.
And I think emergency preparedness was
The first one.
was the first one. So, you know, there are a lot of people that have have come before us. All these ideas are worthy ideas. We're here as a board to to make decisions. And sometimes the decisions that we make, they're they're tough decisions. But I want the public to know that the decisions that we've made today are really rooted in what the community has wanted. So it's not just sort of what the Board of Supervisors wants, or it's not what staff wants, that the decisions before us today are firmly rooted in what the community wants. And so I'm delighted to to sponsor and to support this item. Not sponsor, but I'm delighted to to support this item. And I want to make those who did not get funded this round rest assured. Our staff continually looks on being innovative. Maybe there are other opportunities. I I like your 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 advice, Mr. Caligy, on on working with the sheriff's office potentially. And I I just think us moving forward, we're not going to make everyone happy. But at the same time, we are going to make a lot of those nonprofits happy with who we can fund and how we fund them. And so just really want to thank staff, I want to thank the board for really working through. How long have we been working on this, Robert? Is it two years or one year?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. And not easy work, but I really want to thank you and the staff.
Concerning for the of the or to be of the proposal, which is to reallocate $4 million of Measure K funds that were allocated to NOFO grants. So this is I is to backstop cuts by the by the state government. Have these, has this money already been budgeted or is this reserved for the May, the September revision?
It's being reserved for the September revision at this point in time because we don't know exactly what's being cut. We want to make sure that we have the appropriate dollars to be able to glide some of these programs through that may not be funded ongoing. It's it's very difficult when you have programs, and I'll use this because of my tenure in the Human Services Agency. When you have a program that certain clients that are already in need rely on on a constant basis and the state turns it off like a spigot, you you don't have the means of just saying to that person, I'm going to take away this function or this service that you're getting. Somehow, you need to be able to glide them to a point where they are able to still be able to go on with things in their life and not create another issue for somebody just because something has been removed. So we need to wait to see what happens within the the budget that'll be approved. The legislature on Saturday with the governor said that they have a deal in place. Those are finally being voted on. The governor will sign hopefully by Friday. And then that way, we'll have a better understanding. So September would be the timeframe in which those dollars would be put back into the budget for use.
Is there a possibility that some of the funding would be remain that would would not be used for this backup purpose?
I believe there may be a possibility of that, yes.
So that's another opportunity for some potential additional funding.
Correct.
I think it's a prudent move to to allocate the $4 million for this purpose. I mean, to Supervisor Mueller's point, Measure K was originally passed to fund the core critical services of the county. So this is, I think, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question, Mr. Caligy or Mr. Mankia. At some or a few different points in time, we talked about a gap analysis for senior services countywide so that we might end up with a comprehensive integrated plan for the delivery of senior services. And I didn't really recognize that item in any of the things that we went through. Is it included or is it not included?
It is. It's
It's a solicitation.
It's a solicitation to develop a master plan on aging for San Mateo County, including a gap analysis on historically underserved communities, a system of care to address loneliness among older adults, plus two years of funding for implementation of recommendations. And as you pointed out, Supervisor, we are one of the fastest aging populations in the state in this county. And we do think it's very important that we do this gap analysis and really find out the needs of our senior population, which are quickly becoming one of the most vulnerable populations in this county.
Totally agree. I don't know how I could have missed it.
It's under a solicitation, that's why. I mean, it's easy to miss.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have seven speakers from chambers and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. Start with Stacy Howard, followed by Evan Milburn.
Good morning. I'm happy to say. I'm Stacy Haver, Executive Director of the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. I know the county faces a difficult challenge in allocating the Measure K funds. You've been talking about that with great eloquence through about the last hour or so. And the the community engagement process was an impressive one. I was really happy to see that and I know the nonprofit community generally was. I was disappointed to see that no funds were recommended for any kind of legal services. And I do appreciate Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Corzo highlighting the need for immigration legal services. And I look forward to meeting with with County Executive Caligy and others later this week on that topic. But I did want to highlight the role of legal services generally and the critical importance that that plays in making sure that San Mateo County's safety net works for everyone. Laws, however well-intended, are not self-enforcing. Our social safety net is dependent on a complex web of government agencies, school districts, health systems and community-based organizations, all working effectively together. When rules aren't followed or are misapplied, people are sometimes denied benefits or services that they're entitled to in areas of basic need like housing and healthcare. Too many, too many times, individuals and families cannot break through the bureaucracy on their own. An immigrant who has a lawyer is five times more likely than those without to win their deportation case. When a tenant facing eviction has has representation, they're more likely to remain housed. For survivors of domestic violence, civil legal aid is more effective than access to shelters or to counseling in reducing domestic violence. Legal services are safety net services. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Milburn, followed by Veronica Navarro.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors and Chief Sector Officer, Chief Manager Caligy. I just want to say thank you for supporting Special Olympics with the NOFO. And thank you to the NOFO, NOFO Measure K funds committee for supporting us too. As you've heard me at nauseam up here say, it is really a community for people who don't have one. And I can't express to you how much it's impacted my life, both on whatever playing surface I'm playing, whatever sport I'm playing, but also at my own, in my own home. I don't carry a lot of medals with me. I don't really like them. I'm not the, my mother can tell you, I'm not the silly type. I I feel like I always stick out like the sore thumb because of my disability. So why, why am I a medal holder? But I always keep one with me. But I have a, it's a silver medal. It's from the first boxing tournament I ever played with my dad. Why I keep it around me, because me and my dad didn't have a great relationship growing up. And not to say he was abusive or anything, we were just distant people. She liked, she was an ultra marathon runner. Yes, she is crazy. I've told him that several times. And I'm a sprinter. I like being short and sweet and she plays the long game. But with boxing, it came our relationship and it helped bring us together. And I'm so incredibly, incredibly grateful for it, not only for coaches, not only for sport, but just being able to have something to share with my dad. And now we play in a boxing city week on Thursday nights. So I'm truly thankful for that NOFO Measure K committee for Special Olympics, so more people can have that chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Navarro, followed by Elisa Kessler.
Thank you, Supervisors and NOFO Model Society Committee for supporting the Money Gets Special Olympics. Hi, my name is Elisa Navarro. I'm a lifelong champion of the collegiate and Special Olympics athlete since 2005. I've been an athlete leader since 2020. I love Special Olympics because it has allowed me to be active despite severe apathy. This money allows Special Olympics to reach new athletes and run our program in the county. I want to invite each one of you to the Northern California Summer Games happening this weekend at Santa Clara University. You will see athletes with intellectual and developmental disabilities compete in the highest level in summer sports. The summer sports are track, tennis, swimming and basketball that this city has to offer. As for me, I will be there as an athlete leader, showing people the power of Special Olympics. If you cannot make it, I encourage you to join and find a event in Santa Clara. Special Olympics should be on some, should be something on everyone's bucket list. Thank you.
Thank you. Elisa Kessler, followed by Stephanie Figuera.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Elisa Kessler. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Special Olympics Northern California. My hardest job is to follow Vee and Evan and our great athlete leaders. But I am here today on behalf of hundreds of athletes like Evan and Vee. Their families, our volunteer coaches, our community members that make up the fabric of Special Olympics in San Mateo County. I want to thank the NOFO Measure K Committee for the recommendation of funding for the work that we do in the county and to ask the supervisors for their vote. This funding will be transformational to the work we do. We are more than a sports organization. We use sports as a catalyst to bring together the community. We promote leadership, health and wellness, fitness, mental health and well-being, and inclusion in schools. Our programming brings together those with and without intellectual disabilities. We provide services to a population that are sometimes forgotten, in need, and also the most vulnerable. We are honored by this opportunity, as we have seen with other counties such as Santa Clara County. Funding of this size that spans multiple years will allow us to not just continue the great work in the county that we do, but to really elevate that great work. And so thank you for investing in intellectual disability community and for Special Olympics Northern California. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Stephanie Figuera, followed by Sylvia Tang.
Good morning, Stephanie Figuera, PVI, Enabling Seniors to Age in Place. One of those applications that didn't receive any of those funds. Not here for sour grapes. I want to say thank you. I know this probably was not an easy process and a lot went into it. Very excited, though, to see that there is a solicitation on there for seniors and aging with your program. So we look forward to working with you further as we come back and re-explore what we can do to help continue to serve seniors here in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Tang, followed by our last speaker from chambers, Amy Yan.
Good morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Caligy, Mr. Mankia, Mr. Niblin, staff and community members of San Mateo County. My name is Sylvia Tang. She/her. I grew up in San Mateo County from preschool to community college classes in San Mateo and now work for the County Health Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity. While I've spoken at this podium for work in a work capacity, I believe this is my first time speaking up on my own behalf and on my own time. This past April, I was here in the audience with fellow advocates when Measure K updates were announced and returning today. In many instances, our county has officially prioritized equity, particularly particularly leading with racial equity. Given this priority, I am disappointed to see there is no racial and ethnic and linguistic lens across the board for these Measure K recommendations. While I just heard that there is one solicitation for specific outreach, it is being divided up among multiple CBOs and lacks a priority for direct services, which is needed in all areas of Measure K. While I'm a proponent of uplifting all people of color and diverse languages in our county, I'm here to advocate for Asian Americans and limited English-speaking Chinese community. San Mateo County has over 30,000 limited English-Chinese speakers, a population larger than at least half of our 20 towns and cities in the county. Childcare is a priority in Measure K. And recently, a large group of monolingual Chinese childcare providers attended a commission meeting urging the urgent need for these language needs. And it's important for our county as our county and state is trying to design universal preschool for our residents. Yet much of the population is left out of this conversation. So I urge you to consider these language needs. It's just the start and considering language and racial equity needs across the board in our funding opportunities, especially Asian Americans as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Yan.
Good morning. My name is Amy Yan and I'm the president of the OCA San Mateo. And I'm a 100% volunteer. OCA stands for the Organization of Chinese Americans, Asian Pacific Advocates. Over 50 years ago, OCA started in Washington DC during the Civil Rights Movement to provide a voice for Asian Americans. Over 50 years ago, OCA started in Washington DC during the Civil Rights Movement to provide a voice for Asian Americans. There's over 50 chapters across the US. In 1987, San Mateo was the first of seven chapters organized on the West Coast. For 37 years, we've advocated for our county's Asian Americans. Because of the model minority myth, it's easy to assume that all Asians are doing well, that we are all engineers and doctors, that we are doing fine and that we don't need support services. That illusion was shattered when an elderly Chinese farm worker shot and killed seven coworkers. And sadly, we hear in the news recently about domestic violence involving Asian American families. Asians, young and old, suffer silently from mental health issues because of cultural stigma, identity issues, and isolation from language barriers. For immigrants and their families, linguistic isolation keeps them from getting adequate healthcare, accessing public support systems, and navigating job and housing markets. Of the thousands of people crossing the Mexican border in the last year or so, each day, many of them are Chinese-speaking asylum. We are not a monolith. We are not, we are 30% of the population of San Mateo. We are invisible. So just to remind everybody that not all Asian Americans are doing well. We are not a monolith. Don't be fooled. Our community needs your help too.
Thank you. Let's end the public comment from chambers. So Matty Court, please proceed.
We have eight hand raised. We'll start with Taylor, followed by Kate Lewis. Taylor, please unmute and begin.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to speak again about constituency and I just want to say I am both shocked and appalled at the lack of education going on with the Board of Supervisors. Earlier you spoke so adamantly about supporting gender-affirming care. Apparently, nobody on this board has bothered to read the nationally-renowned CAS report from the NIH. I would suggest that every member of this board after this meeting go and read that report before you vote on garnering support for gender-affirming care. If you were to read that report, you'll find that it actually states that post-hormone therapy, a subject is going to receive somewhere around a 12-fold increase in suicidal ideations and thoughts of self-harm. And I know from personal experience, I watched my best friend kill himself in a parking lot because he went the entire distance of transgender medicine, removed his genitals. And when he got to the end of the process, he actually found that he was going to need to spend the rest of his life having medical interventions very frequently. He found out that he actually really wanted to be his old self and that perhaps maybe it was just social anxiety that he was suffering from and not the fact that he could just wake up and be in a different body. I'd like to reference the fact that if I cut off all of my arms, tattooed my entire body green, split my tongue in half, and then had horns surgically implanted on my head, and I walked around and demanded that everybody recognize that I'm a dragon and start treating me like I'm a mythical creature, everybody would be like, you know what, sir, you're, you're, you're out of control right now and we are not going to support that ideology because that's not reality. Likewise, there's only two genders and no amount of drugs or surgery will ever change your gender. That's biological fact. So I think that you should get educated before you're advocating to push anymore of this material upon our children because my constituents completely disagree with you. I represent a lot of people that don't agree with you at all.
Thank you, Taylor. Kate Lewis, followed by Victoria Sun. Kate, please unmute and begin.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm an immigration attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto and I come to express my profound disappointment that the proposed Measure K funding does not include deportation defense services. This will mean that my office has no choice but to turn away San Mateo County residents seeking life-saving immigration and legal services because of lack of funding while continuing to accept cases for those from Santa Clara County. This frankly sucks and it's a sad reality for an organization which is based in and has long served San Mateo County. Although we can give these San Mateo County residents referrals to other organizations, we know from experience that those organizations are also at capacity and can't help. So these people are left with no one to help them. And these are the most vulnerable residents of our county and this is the most consequential proceeding of their lives. This decision is particularly disappointing given that we may be heading into a second Trump presidency. I have no doubt that the members of this board will condemn the virulent anti-immigrant policies of that potential presidency. Trump, of course, had promised mass deportations and more. But if and when that happens, we should remember that when given the opportunity to prepare in advance to protect these community members, our county declined. I'm grateful to Supervisor Mueller for indicating you would direct some discretionary funds to removal defense and encourage the other supervisors to do the same and to include removal defense in future budget revisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Victoria Sun, followed by David Fleishman. Victoria, please unmute and begin.
My name is Victoria Sun and I'm an immigration attorney and co-director of Pangia Legal Services, which provides deportation defense services to county residents. I want to reiterate our concerns that the county is not including any funding for immigration services as part of this package. This means that potentially after June 2025, in the middle of the first year of the next presidency, a likely Trump presidency, at a time when immigrants will need our support the most, county residents will no longer have access to these critical services to keep them with their families here in the county. One of these services that the county is likely cutting funding for is the Rapid Response Hotline. The county hotline provides 24/7 support for community members in the wake of ICE arrests and raids. Year-to-date, the hotline has received nearly 200 calls from community members. We've been able to activate on-call attorneys at a moment's notice to stop same-day deportations of longtime residents. County residents also desperately need removal defense services in immigration court. There are actually more than 15,000 county residents currently in removal proceedings. More than 9,000 of them, or 58% of them, have no attorney. Immigrants with attorneys are more than five times as likely to win their cases. Each of these 9,000 immigrants has a family and community here in the county. It's essential that the county find a way to fund these critical services to ensure that it continues to remain a welcoming county for all. I thank Supervisor Mueller for exploring the option of discretionary funds from the district to fund these services and I hope that we continue to work with the supervisors and county staff to support these vulnerable county residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. David Fleishman, followed by Melissa Polling. David, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, supervisors, staff, and community. Thank you for your hard work with Measure K and supporting buildup and for the upcoming solicitation for services to support family childcare providers and those who want to get licensed. One of the challenges faced by the early care and education field is a lack of a cohesive system akin to K-12. This can and does lead to disjointed, redundant, and overlapping efforts. As a longtime countywide supporter of family childcare providers and being a decades-long implementer of a state-funded program that is specifically designed to help individuals obtain their childcare license, it is hoped that this funding can help build upon and connect existing resources and services to bring a more aligned and linguistically-inclusive system of support to the family childcare field. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Melissa Polling, followed by Rob Skinner. Melissa, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, everyone. I am Melissa Polling, the Director for Fresh Lifelines for Youth, or FLY, in San Mateo County. On behalf of FLY and the youth we serve, I would like to express our gratitude for the investment in children in our county and for FLY being recommended for this funding. FLY does the important work of disrupting the school-to-prison pipeline and we do this with a variety of interventions in the form of five different programs that we offer to the highest need and most marginalized youth across the entire county. I don't have time to go in-depth about each program, but I will name that they are the Law, Leadership, Reentry, Peer Point, and State FLY programs that serve hundreds of youth across this county. The outcomes that are focused on across these programs are increased educational attainment, self-sufficiency, and social-emotional learning skills. I want to emphasize that these programs are only effective for our youth when we put the right staff and people into their lives. FLY Magic, as we like to call it, is really about investing in our incredible staff that believe in, care about, and go the extra mile to support these young people. Thank you for allowing us to continue this important work and serve the county's kids.
Thank you, Melissa. Three hands. Rob Skinner, followed by Katrina Logan. Rob, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. As Pescadero is an underprivileged community, as many of you know, and I'm referencing David's statement of those who are most vulnerable and they need to be included in community endeavors. In conversations, I guess who is the vice chair of the MidCoast Community Council, he informed me that he spent $500 to finance his campaign through fees, filing fees, posters, et cetera, which is a fair amount of money, not to mention driving and commuting. Now, as far as I know, the mandate is still 72-hour requirements of posting an agenda, which was not done in this case. And the item must be agendized in one meeting and no action taken until the following meeting. I don't know if that's changed or not. We can ask our president county council. There is most definitely, at a minimum, confusion regarding this upcoming election. And that, of course, is not a good thing in any instance, especially this coming year. Now, due to the lack of proper process, and I don't know if there's a staff report on this issue or not, but I am continuing, asking for a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Katrina Logan, followed by Carlisle An Young. Katrina, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and county staff. My name is Katrina Logan and I'm the Executive Director at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. And I'm here because eviction defense is homelessness prevention and should be funded as part of the safety net of services to keep tenants housed. In 2023, 1,514 evictions were filed in San Mateo County. This was a 35% increase from pre-pandemic eviction filings and the majority of these were due to non-payment of rent. In this county, 95% of tenants did not have an attorney, while 92% of landlords were represented by an attorney. This is a serious inequity problem. A significant portion of families facing eviction have limited proficiency in English, are limited by a physical or mental disability, are single mothers raising children, and/or have experienced recent medical emergencies or job loss. Last year, our attorneys negotiated over $1.1 million in rent debt waivers for our clients. This is savings for the client and savings for all of our partner rental assistance agencies in this county. Eviction defense can lead to safe landings for tenants because we negotiate more time, the waiver of rent debt, and a clean rental record. Without a clean rental history, finding a new place to live can be almost impossible. We're glad that the county has funded more affordable housing and other safety net services as we face a 20% increase in homelessness. But we also believe that eviction defense is part of those safety net services to keep tenants housed and enable them to land safely after experiencing an eviction. CLASP and Legal Aid have partnered for years to ensure eviction defense legal services exist in San Mateo County. And we believe the county missed an opportunity to fund eviction defense and really any legal services in this Measure K round of applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Two hands. Carlisle An Young, followed by Lisa Tealer. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I live on the mid-coast. I've asked this before of Mr. Manquia or whoever it is that provides the data for Measure K. But it seems to me that you guys never seem to give us the information to let us know what, if any, money is actually going to the mid-coast and the unincorporated areas mostly represented by Supervisor Mueller. We have a lot of needs and a lot of people that live without the benefit of a city council to advocate for us. So the only person who can advocate on our behalf is Supervisor Mueller and he's busy. So it seems to me, I didn't see much on the list other than maybe Coastside Pride in Half Moon Bay that was getting funded. But it would be nice to see if all the money's staying over on the other side of the peninsula because we all contribute to Measure K money from the sales tax. So if in the future you see it to be a prudent thing to provide a zip code district of the portmone of Measure K money, it might alleviate my concern, which is that we don't get very much over here in anything. So, thank you very much. I know there is a, one daycare center that's actually licensed and they are probably going to go out of business because the GCSD, Granada Community Services District, wants to take over the building and build a community center, which we also don't have over here on the coast. So think about it, maybe think how you're giving most of the money to the peninsula. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Carlisle. At this time, we have three additional hands. Mr. President, would you like me to make a final call?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Members of the public, at this time, please do raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this item, item two, from the Measure K budget. After the final hand is raised at this point, I'll announce that name and we will make that the final speaker for this item. Okay, final call has been made and the last three speakers are as follows. Lisa Tealer, Catherine Slater-Carter, with the last speaker being Anya Shapiro. Lisa, please unmute and begin.
Thank you and good morning. Greetings to President Canapa, other supervisors, county manager, and staff in the community. My name is Lisa Tealer. Pronoun, she/her, I'm the Executive Director of Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, also known as BAC-HAC. I want to first thank you for the vigorous review process that took place for the Measure K grants. I was disappointed that our organization was not selected. I do have just a couple of comments and that is, one, I don't know if there was consideration made when you pull sort of more established, larger nonprofits with some of us grassroots organizations. If that's the case, then we will continue to be sort of at a disadvantage. But I don't want to speak out of turn. Maybe that was considered, but I just wanted to make that point. The second point I wanted to make is just if you could provide those folks that were not selected with some like overall feedback so that we can continue to evolve and develop as organizations. As you know, the landscape, the philanthropic landscape has changed quite a bit and for us smaller grassroots organizations, it has been really a struggle. So again, thank you for this opportunity to provide my feedback and comments.
Thank you, Lisa. Catherine Slater-Carter, please unmute and begin.
Oh, thank you. This is a new format for me. Thank you for allowing me to speak on Measure K and I'm going to throw in one other comment. I am a resident of the mid-coast for 45 years and I hold several elected board positions, but I am speaking as an individual and a resident for the mid-coast. There are many things that the mid-coast needs, but certainly I agree with Sid Young that it would be nice to see on an, on an agency-wide basis where the Measure K funds come to on the, on the mid-coast. We have many, many seniors who live on Social Security, aging in place, and there are some transit programs that are through SamTrans and others. So I'd love to see what kind of services we're getting here. My last point is I agree on the PMAC issue. I am going to ask for it to be continued. I was looking for a staff report on it and couldn't find anything. I was looking for public notice on it for the public to be aware of this and couldn't find much except the agendas and the Board of Supervisors' agendas. And so I think this should be continued with a full staff report. And also, consideration needs to be made. The people on PMAC are volunteers. They don't have money to promote an election to save their own community organization. So I think this needs to be looked at in terms of fairness, needing a staff report, and needing a full discussion on a public level at PMAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Our final speaker, Anya Shapiro. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anya Shapiro. I'm the Executive Director of the Daly City Youth Health Center, where we provide important holistic care for youth and underserved communities across North San Mateo County. I want to first thank the No Phone Measure K Committee and the Board of Supervisors for all of their hard work and to ask the supervisors for their vote. Most of our youth are BIPOC, and many of our providers are as well, with a focus on reflecting the diverse community that we serve and increasing access and equity. We are in a very serious and ongoing mental health crisis, which isn't going away anytime soon. Our youth health center is in a largely neglected provider desert of North San Mateo County, tasked with serving youths who represent the highest needs in our youth population and those for whom suicide is often a very real possibility. Our program is often, I'm so sorry, our program is often their only recourse to hope, and our outcomes speak for themselves because our clinicians are very highly trained. By the end of treatment, most of our youth clients are transformed. 75% of our clients achieve significant improvement in their well-being, and because we work with their entire family, their siblings and caregivers benefit as well, interrupting ongoing generational trauma. And this is the only way to overcome the mental health crisis in the long run. Without this critical funding, we become more likely to have to turn these very vulnerable youth and their families away, sending them to an overloaded referral system where they are far more likely to fall through the cracks and not receive the care that they need. So we are very grateful to you prioritizing these crucial services for our North County community, and we appreciate your continued attention to this mental health crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anya. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any concluding remarks or questions here from members? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on item number two?
Okay, I'll make the, I'll make the motion on the Measure K to adopt the resolution, both A and B.
Second.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. And Supervisor Canapa?
Yes.
And President Stokum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Move to item number three, which is a health matter. It's to adopt, adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement with Crestwood Behavioral Health for Residential Rehabilitation and Long-Term Care Services for a term of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027, in an amount not to exceed $17,334,000. Take it away.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Executives, and colleagues in community. So this item before you is a three-year agreement with Crestwood Behavioral Health. Really is an essential provider in providing support to our clients who have severe mental health conditions and comorbid medical issues that need to be placed in a locked facility. So for these three years, Crestwood will be providing up to 53 beds for behavioral health and recovery services, and aging adult clients who have severe mental illness that need rehab services, treatment, and long-term care. Up to eight skilled nursing facility beds for probate dementia conservators, so clients who have dementia, and about four dedicated beds in their San Jose psychiatric health facility that really serves as a backup for psychiatric emergency services for our 3A, B, our long-term inpatient care. And just to let you know that Crestwood Behavioral Health will also be providing mental health rehab services in the new Cordillares Health and Healing Campus as it opens in September. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Don't appear to be any questions, and we'll give Mr. Clerk time to get back to his station.
I don't have any speakers from chambers, so Madam Pluck, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item number three regarding Crestwood Behavioral Health. One hand raised, Martin Fox. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning again, my fellow veterans, President Stokum, and County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Canapa, Corzo, and Mueller, and Mr. Caligy. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting the county judiciary and its vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Lionel impeachment short act atop county state legislative priority and the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43 atop county health department priority. California's residents needed Dorothea Dix-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. California's Lionel impeachment short act of 1967 is one of the 10 worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the 50 states. Despite the county judiciary's vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program and thanks to a supervisor, they have to confront the evils of the ACLU-supported opposition to send up Bill 43 that criminalizes persons living with serious mental illness complicated by substance use disorders. Thanks to San Mateo County's judicial branch, you have a choice to make. Please make the reintroduction and passage of the Lionel impeachment short acts repeal atop county state legislative priority, immediate implementation of the Senate Bill 43, the county's health department's highest priority, and make the contract for psychiatric treatment services outside the county health department the last one. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. That concludes public comment, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you. Any concluding comments by members? There being none, could we have a motion on item number three?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canapa?
Yes.
President Stokum?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number four is adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement with Telecare Corporation for Psychiatric Treatment Services and Long-Term Care for Clients of the Public Guardian for the term of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $7,169,915.
Hello again. So this agreement, this one-year agreement is specifically a few things. Want to provide bed capacity for folks that are needing mental health services in their location in Oakland, at the Garfield Neurobehavioral Center, and also with folks that have severe mental illness who are over 65 in their skilled nursing facility in Hayward. Most importantly, Telecare will be continuing the operations for the current and existing Cordillares MHRC and suites as we wait for the opening of the new four MHRCs and cohousing in September. So in the meantime that we're waiting for that to open, Cordillares will continue to provide the services. Once they are transitioned out to the additional facilities, then this agreement will end. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Dr. J, relative to Cordillares. You know, we received some email from ASFI members really concerned about their jobs during this transition, meaning if we were to enter into this agreement or contract, that they would potentially not be included. And so there are people who've worked at these jobs for 20 to 30 years and just really left with nothing. Can you speak to, or maybe it's the staff, can you speak to how those conversations are going and then how staff is trying to get out ahead of it? Just I really, you know, you have these people who dedicate their lives. We made a transition to probably one of the best facilities in the, you know, world, United States, but I am concerned about these workers.
So what are, we have been working very closely with Telecare to really ensure that the affected individuals will get sort of the resources and the support that they need. I know that the union, labor, and Telecare staff have been working very, very closely to come up with some package or some agreement that will actually be helpful for everybody. So what we've done in our effort is to work with Telecare to provide retention, a package also to support them. But what I also understood is that they are helping link those potential folks that will be impacted to get other jobs for any of those new MHRCs or cohousing. So there's really a lot of efforts to get people linked to services, and I know that they have actually linked people now already to get some jobs at these new facilities.
Great. And then through the county executive, can you just keep us updated? I don't know if it's through a memo, because this is really, this is really vitally important, right? I mean, for me, it is, but I'd really, I want to make sure that as we move forward, that we don't leave these workers behind. And so I'm curious to us tracking this and really making sure that we ensure that the staff is accommodated for it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that we were doing some kind of workfare out there to, for actually not only them, but for others, because we do have a lot of job openings at the county and through these other facilities. So we're looking to connect people to jobs, and that would be our goal. Our hope certainly would be that all these employees would have a job at the end.
And let me just ask you to really reach out to those workers. I think they have a representative, just so we're communicating with them, because there is fear running through, you know, through the, through the organization. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're transparent and at the same time, making sure that we just don't, and I know we wouldn't do this, but just leaving them in a position where, you know, they're hopeless, right? So I hope we're able to move forward in a direction where we're able to have those conversations.
How many people are we talking about?
From what we understood, it's close to about 40 to 50 people. But as Mike said, Mr. Caligy said, we are sort of really providing support. We actually are trying to work with the county HR to get them linked also to do a virtual job fair. We, they, Telecare, at least from my understanding, is looking for other facilities for them to move if they're not able to retain or be here at the Cordillares facility. But we are very, working very closely with our staff to really get them linked to additional support.
You said 40 to 50. Is it 40 or is it 50 or is it 42?
I think it's between that number. It's between that 40.
Okay. And when would this have to be concluded by, or is there a date by which this will be resolved?
Well, it'd be the day that they move into the new facility. I'm not sure, Dr. Africa, do we have a date?
We know that the state is coming for licensing and certification at the beginning of July. Our planned move in or move out is the end of July. So we're really hoping that no further than September, that they'll really be settled in. So that's the goal. It's by the end of July.
So I'm a little confused. You can clarify for me, but being responsive to Supervisor Canapa's request about a report, when would we get that?
I was going to give it to you after they moved in so we could, we'd be able to know how many folks were potentially displaced and how many received jobs. So I was going to wait till after we knew the outcome. But in the meantime, we're working, to the extent that we can, we use the private negotiations, obviously, with the unions and private enterprise, but to the extent that we can help facilitate other jobs or jobs of the other providers for the MHRCs in that complex, that same complex, we're trying to do that currently.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Motion? Oh, public comment?
No comments from chambers. Madam Pluck, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item four regarding Telecare Corporation. We have one hand raised for Martin Fox. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning again, my fellow veterans, President Stokum, County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Canapa Corzo, Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Caligy. When I speak to you, I'm also speaking to you as a former member of Allied Industrial Workers Union Local 144, AFFL-CIO, for many years. They helped put me through school. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting the county judiciary and its vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Lionel impeachment short act atop county state legislative priority and the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43 atop county health department priority. California's residents have a need for a Dorothea Dix-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system because it's, the Lionel impeachment short act is one of the 10 worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the United States. And thanks to our courts, they also have to confront the evils of the ACLU-supported opposition to Senate Bill Four that criminalizes persons living with mental illness complicated by substance use disorders. I know what goes on at union meetings. Thanks to San Mateo County's judicial branch, you have a choice. Please make defunding the intellectually and morally bankrupt law foundation of disability rights California attorneys atop county federal legislative priority, the reintroduction and passage of the Lionel impeachment short acts repeal atop county state legislative priority, and the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43, the county health department's highest priority, and make this contract one of the last contracts for out-of-county psychiatric treatment services. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Seeing no further hands, Mr. President, back to you.
Okay, motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving second, and Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo's absent. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canapa?
No.
President Stokum?
Yes.
Motion passes with Supervisor Canapa casting a nay vote and Supervisor Corzo being absent.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm going to ask for your patience. We have one, two, three, four, five more items. Can we just power through this and then do our closed session? Okay, he's going to walk out. We'll keep going. Okay, no, yes. Sorry. Okay. Item five, Measure K request, Human Services Agency adopt a resolution authorizing an agreement with We Hope to Operate Noncongregate Homeless Shelter Services for a term beginning July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027, with a total amount not to exceed $5 million. Ms. Director.
Thank you so much, President Stokum. Good afternoon, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Claire Cunningham, she/her pronouns, and I am the Director of the Human Services Agency. I'm here today to request your approval of a contract with We Hope to operate the Coast House Shelter in Half Moon Bay for the next three years. Coast House Shelter is a 52-unit non-congregate shelter that opened in 2020. And last December, HSA issued a request for proposals, and We Hope was selected based on their experience and overall program approach, which includes intensive housing-focused case management and community building to maintain positive relationships with residents and partners on the coast. Through this contract and with monitoring and oversight performed by HSA's Center on Homelessness, We Hope would provide intensive onsite support services, including 24/7 staffing, housing-focused case management, service linkages, and facilities operations to assist those who are experiencing homelessness with finding and moving into permanent housing. There is a lot of demand for this shelter because of its location on the coast, and we believe that We Hope's approach will help reduce the length of stay experienced by shelter residents so that more people on the coast can be served. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Very good. Good report. Mr. Pine? Any questions? Mr. Canapa? Supervisor Corzo? Mr. Mueller's not with us right at the moment, so we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Pluck, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item five regarding the We Hope agreement. No hands raised, Mr. President. Back to you.
Okay, thank you. Does someone want to make a motion here, please?
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller is absent. Supervisor Canapa? And President Stokum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Director. Move to item number six, which is, oh, a county attorney matter.
Yes.
A recommendation to authorize and direct the county attorney to file on behalf of the County of San Mateo an amicus curiae brief in the United States Supreme Court in the matter of Garland versus Vanderstock, a case involving the regulation of ghost guns. Did I say that correctly?
You did. It was amicus curiae, perfect. So thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to just take a couple of minutes to set the scene here, and then I'm going to ask a couple of my colleagues to take a couple of minutes to discuss what we're wanting to do here. We are, we've been approached as the county attorney's office and offered an opportunity to participate in, as you noted, an amicus curiae brief in a case pending in the U.S. Supreme Court. It's a case of, again, Garland v. Vanderstock, and it really involves a challenge to a final rule adopted by the And it really involves a challenge to a final rule adopted by the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. It's not strictly speaking a Second Amendment case. It's a case that really deals with regulatory, rulemaking authority. But we thought it was important, particularly in light of this board's stated interest over, over time in firearms control and regulation. So I wanted to introduce a couple of my colleagues, Lauren Carroll, who you've all had a chance to hear from in the past with respect to various items. And then we have a law clerk who's with us, Mary Jo Nunez, who is a native and resident of South San Francisco, an alum of St. Veronica's Elementary School, St. Ignatius in San Francisco, and is currently a student at UC San Francisco School of Law there, what used to be Hastings. So she's been roped into helping us prepare this matter, and she'll spend a few minutes talking to you about it as well. So Lauren, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Niblin. Good afternoon, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. I think Mr. Niblin set the stage very well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Jo to talk about the underlying case. And then I will speak about the amicus brief that the county has been asked to join.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors. Like Mr. Niblin mentioned, my name is Mary Jo Nunez, and I'm one of the summer law clerks for the county attorney's office. I'm here today to discuss the recent Supreme Court case surrounding ghost guns, specifically Garland versus Vanderstock, which is the subject of this amicus brief. First, it may be helpful to discuss what ghost guns are. So ghost guns are unregulated firearms, excuse me, unregistered firearms without serial numbers that are readily assembled from gun-building kits. These kits are made up of different components that can easily be put together and purchased online by high-risk individuals without a background check, including by people who are legally prohibited by owning guns, minors, and people who would like to use a gun for criminal activity. In April 2022, the Attorney General signed the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Final Rule. The Final Rule defined ghost guns as firearms so that they would be subject to the same regulations as traditional preassembled firearms. Later in August 2022, the plaintiffs in this case filed a suit regarding the Final Rule, alleging that the ATF overstepped its bounds by extending the statutory definition of a firearm too far by including ghost guns and treating them like a preassembled firearm. In the next month, the District Court in Fort Worth, Texas, issued a court order that required the party to stop their activity. In this case, that meant the Final Rule not being implemented. The government appealed this. While waiting for their appeal, the District Court agreed with the plaintiff and struck down the Final Rule. The government then appealed to the Fifth Circuit, where the court affirmed the lower court's ruling. The government appealed again, and earlier this year, the Supreme Court took the case into their docket. By a 5-4 vote, the Supreme Court allowed the Biden administration to temporarily reinstate the Final Rule while the challenge to it continued in the lower courts. The merits of this case will likely be heard later this year in October. And I now turn to Lauren to discuss more about the amicus brief in depth and the county's possible role in it.
Thank you, Mary Jo. An amicus or amicus brief, however you want to say it, is Latin for friend of the court. So an amicus brief is filed by persons or organizations who are not party to the case but want to weigh in on the decision and give the court some guidance as to why they should rule in favor of one party or the other. So this particular amicus brief that the county has been asked to sign onto is being prepared by the law firm Perkis Kui on behalf of a number of cities, counties, and prosecutors and local law enforcement agencies across the country, including here in California. And this brief will urge the Supreme Court to uphold the ATF rule and conclude that the ATF did not exceed its authority when determining that ghost guns are firearms. And the reason that they are making this argument, potentially the county included, is not necessarily to repeat the legal arguments made by the parties, but to emphasize the grave public safety risk that ghost guns pose and the unique public safety challenges they pose to our law enforcement agencies and prosecutors who are charged with enforcing gun crimes. So this brief, and I've seen a draft of it, focuses on emphasizing specific real-world examples and numerical trends to emphasize how, since ghost guns started to proliferate in the past decade or so, they have just exploded. And, and the numbers of ghost guns that have been recovered by law enforcement as used in crimes has grown and grown and grown until the ATF actually implemented this rule. And the parties putting together the amicus brief will argue that the number of ghost guns has actually been slightly reduced in the years that the ATF rule has been in place, which has really only been a couple of years, which just goes to show how important this rule is to stopping the spread of ghost guns. So in addition to signing on to this brief, the county has been asked to provide some data about ghost guns in the county to be used as examples and further support for the brief. And just to give you a sense of ghost guns in the county, we have some statistics that were provided by the sheriff's office to our office. And they found that since 2019, from 2019 to 2013, San Mateo County has recovered 130 ghost guns. And four of these belong to people who had prior arrests for domestic violence, two who had prior arrests for child abuse, one who had a prior arrest for elder abuse, one minor, six who were members of criminal street gangs, and one case involving a domestic extremist group. And these examples are anecdotal, but they just go to show the importance of stopping the spread of ghost guns and supporting the argument that Amici are attempting to make in this brief in arguing for the Supreme Court to uphold the ATF's rule. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to ask Mr. Niblin and Mr. Silverman why they, why they picked on the new summer intern to throw down here and give testimony on ghost guns? You did a great job, Mary Jo. Great job.
We just thought, in standard military, standard military way, that it was an opportunity to excel.
That's the first time I've ever heard lawyers get a round of applause, but thank you so much. Okay, so questions from board members? Supervisor Corzo?
I don't have any questions, but I'm excited to be a part of this, and I hope that we can move forward with it. I think, you know, addressing gun violence has to happen in a multitude of ways, this one included. And I'm happy that the county attorney's office has moved it forward.
Thank you. Mr. Canepa? Mr. Pine? Okay, public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom to comment on item six for the amicus brief in the matter of Garland versus Vanderstock. No hands raised, Mr. President, back to you.
Very good. We'll do, we need a motion, right?
I move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Sure. We're doing a motion for item number six. I'll take, I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa? And President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, on number, item number eight, we have thirteen speakers at the moment, thirteen. And I'm wondering your desire to continue on? We have a couple more items or to take a break? Mr. Canepa says continue.
Let's go.
All right, let's do it. So we'll turn to item number seven, which is a Measure K request to adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Life Moves to add $756,445 in funds for a new total obligation not to exceed $2,706,158 and to extend the term of the agreement through December 31st, 2024 to fund county-wide case management and outreach and engagement services to unsheltered households. And there was a second part, approve an appropriation transfer in an amount not to exceed $150,000 from non-departmental services to human, to the Human Services Agency to support the housing outreach team. The sponsor of this, I think, is Supervisor Pine.
Right, I'll go ahead and kick this off and then turn to Claire Cunningham for additional comments. So this item is an amendment to the county's contract with Life Moves to provide homeless outreach or HOT services throughout the county. HOT has proven to be a successful method of engaging individuals experiencing homelessness to connect with services, case management, temporary shelter, and permanent housing. For me, I want to note that Part B of this item proposes to use $150,000 of District One's Measure K discretionary funds to support continuation of a specific HOT program in Milbrae where homeless activity at the Barge Station has been particularly vexing. This continuation, which was requested by the city through Councilmember Angelina Galen, is intended to help the city bridge the gap between the expiration of the current program and the launch of the county's new approach to HOT, which we hope to see later this year. The district discretionary portion of the funding will be used to support two case managers to be based in Milbrae for six months. So with that, I'll turn over to Claire Cunningham.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. As set forth in this contract with Life Moves, our homeless outreach providers connect unsheltered homeless individuals and households to shelter and other supportive services. They also work to stabilize and house them through intensive targeted case management. What's important context to know is that we've implemented the current homeless outreach team, also known as HOT, model for over a decade. And HSA's Center on Homelessness is currently in the process of recalibrating its approach to homeless outreach services. So this contract, to use Mr. Manquia's term, will allow for gliding through the end of December 31st, 2024, when we will transition over to the new HOT 2.0 model. The targets for this contract amendment are that 136 unduplicated individuals will receive case management services, 105 unduplicated individuals will receive shelter placements, and 37 individuals will be placed into permanent housing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions from board members? Mr. Mueller? Any question? Supervisor Corzo, Supervisor Canepa, Supervisor Pine? Okay, we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from chambers, Sarah Fields.
Hi, good afternoon. Sarah Fields, Director of Community Engagement and Public Affairs for Life Moves. We thank the county for the ongoing partnership around countywide homeless outreach services. As Supervisor Pine mentioned, and thank you for sponsoring this item, these countywide services are incredibly important in building trust with our unhoused community, particularly for folks who have experienced long-term or chronic homelessness, being able to build trust to come indoors, to receive services, and so on and so forth. Really important to continue the HOT work, and we look forward to continuing the work with HSA as HOT is sort of reconceived. But appreciate the consideration for extending the contract through the end of the calendar year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No additional speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for item seven for Life Moves. No hands raised, Mr. President, back to you.
Very good. How about a motion?
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second, oh, second.
Roll call.
Sure, I'll take the roll call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa? And President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you, Director. Item number eight is accept staff's update on the design of the County of San Mateo's Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement in partnership between the County Executive's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, and provide feedback to staff. Let's see. Who is going to do this?
President, President Slocum and members of the board, we are happy to, to present this. This has been really a culmination of a lot of work over a period of time here. And I will be having Shereen Malakavalli present on this. And I think there's other presenters involved in this also. So Shereen, would you like to kick it off?
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, President Slocum, honorable members of the, of the board, Mr. Callagie, Niblin, Manquia, Clerks Purwawal and Golistan. I am joined here with support from, with staff Kelsey from the County Attorney's Office, as well as Mr. Niblin here to answer any questions from the, related to the County Attorney's Office. But I will take the bulk of the presentation. I am Shereen Malakavalli, she/her pronouns, Chief Equity Officer. And this item is to update and receive feedback on the design of the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement that the board approved in December of 2023. As you'll see in the presentation, what we're going to do is share a phased approach for, to implement and seed the infrastructure needed to implement the first, these new functions for the county. And this will be in partnership between the County Attorney's Office, County Executive's Office, as well as the District Attorney's Office. Some technical difficulties, I apologize. But overall, we will go through, just, we'll not belabor this since you all have established the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement, but just to, as a reminder for those who were not at that meeting, just how pervasive wage theft is and how impactful it is to our low-wage populations here in San Mateo County and across the nation. And while we have driven home the, the need that, around wage theft for those low-wage workers, we wanted to also highlight the public losses that we have as, as all of us in San Mateo County. And also note that businesses that engage in wage theft are also undercutting the market as a whole, creating more challenges for businesses that want to do good and pay well. Key considerations that we have been learning in this phased approach is really that if we are going to engage in education and outreach, we really want to make sure that we have the infrastructure to respond, to enforce the labor rights. We also have learned about the challenges that the State Labor Commission is having with just the high volume of requests that they're getting with the limited resources they have to respond. And one thing that we wanted to keep in mind in our key considerations is that while there is a lot that this office can do, and we've seen that in our research across the nation for offices of labor standards and enforcement, that we wanted to begin with a thoughtful, effective seeding of this new function within our county infrastructure in a way that it could grow thoughtfully and effectively. In this phased approach for building infrastructure, we do want to have the universal goal of workers being paid fair wages and treated respectfully. In its full capacity, we imagine having an array of resources and functions, including outreach and engagement, as has been discussed, data and evaluation to make sure that we are tracking claims, understand the challenges, and are evaluating our interventions. As stated before, it's important that we make sure that our outreach and education, as we let workers know of their rights, that we also allow them to have a mechanism to enforce the rights for them through enforcement mechanisms. Though we do want to highlight that we do think that employers, once they know better, they do better, and that will be our hope. We also believe that the function of the OLS Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement will really be to hold this partnership together across the departments, the offices that we'll be working with, as well as with community partners who oftentimes are closest to the communities that we need to be reaching, as well as cities, as more cities may be interested in partnering with us as we go forward and grow. We also know that there are a large amount of state judgments that are already in the books. We are, since 2018, that's over $4.5 million that are owed to workers in San Mateo County that have not been paid out. And so we do want to look at programming on how we might use the account, measures of accountability that we might have within our county infrastructure to be able to pay, ensure restitution for those workers. And then strategy and policy, we have also been learning from the more mature offices of Labor Standards and Enforcement that the more information and enforcement- of Labor Standards and Enforcement, that the more information and enforcement ramifications or codified into some policies, the stronger that they can be in the implementation and enforcement. The phased approach, we have been in partnership with Supervisor Mueller's office, Supervisor Pine's office, our County Attorney's Office, as well as our District Attorney's Office. We've been learning a lot from other Offices of Labor Standards and Enforcement, from our labor unions, our legal aid partners, research entities, and much, much more around what others are doing, what the key challenges and opportunities are, and what are the pitfalls. We have conceptualized this design we're bringing forth to you, and some early, some thoughts on resources that we've been, you've already seen a little bit under Measure K item. In Phase One, with, following your feedback after this presentation, we would begin by seeding infrastructure, developing some programming. We would be, we're proposing focusing on a few industries as a starting point so that we're able to better understand and support those industries before expanding beyond that, and you'll hear a little bit more on those, piloting, understanding, and then scaling before we expand in Phase Two. As you'll see, the partners that I've mentioned here, this is not something that can, this really relies on the, the capacity and the specific skills of different departments that we already have here. We are going to plan for the Equity Office to work on the programming with county permits. For example, County of San, Santa Clara County uses their restaurant permits as a way to make sure that restaurant workers are, provide rest, restaurants provide restitution to workers when there has been a state claim. That's just one example of ways that county programming can help support enforcement. They would, the Equity Office would be supporting the coordination, supporting the outreach, engagement, data tracking, some of the policy strategies, best practice development. And then we would have partnerships. The Office of Labor Standards would hold a hotline in partnership with a community-based organization. There are examples of ones that are well-practiced in this area that are supported by legal aid organizations, as an example. We would, and they would be quarterbacking this effort, so we want to make sure that workers and employers know where to go, even though we are giving you a partnership model, we want to have one place that people can go for information. And we are proposing, starting with three industries that we know are particularly problematic in this area, farm workers, to support farm workers, construction workers, and restaurant workers. We do believe that we could lean into our Economic Advancement Centers, who have built a lot of trust within our small business enterprises, as well as our low-wage workers. Our District Attorney's Office has a lot of experience with criminal prosecutions, obviously, and investigations related, related to labor standards. And our County Attorney's Office would also be here to support the civil prosecution as needed on the civil cases. This is not something I'm going to go too far into, but I did want to show you that we have been thinking about how this would be funneled, even though there are multiple partnerships here. The yellow is that hotline, so we could offer one point of contact for workers and employers as a starting point to get more information. And then as those, as determined by the intake, if they are fairly Level A challenges, as we're saying, they may be able to be directed to the State Labor Commission's Office to information and education. We plan to build out a resource library on a website that they may be directed to, may be able to be able to support them that way. Otherwise, then we would be routing them to, they would be routing them to the County Attorney's Office, of which we would move forward in that way, depending on whether there are city-focused issues, there are criminal or civil. So for resource considerations, we are putting forth to you, as in the item previous on the budget, as well as the Measure K, you'll see two positions within the Equity Office, one attorney within the County Attorney's Office, and then our District Attorney's Office has, is final, is in, is finalizing a grant from the State Labor Commission to expand their efforts around wage theft right now, that will be in final determination at this point, but we are hopeful. And, and we have the costs written out here for the different positions, as well as some of the CBO partnerships, like the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement Hotline that we were speaking of, the Economic Advancement Centers, and so forth. We do want to just note for you that we don't, we anticipate a Phase Two, where we want to partner more strongly with our community-based organizations that are trusted with these key industries, provide and support for the Board of Supervisors as they review expanded policies if needed. Consider what other measures can be, that we might have in place to be able to provide restitution to workers when the states have already made those claims, that $4.5 million that I mentioned. And then recognizing that we do want to expand to other industries that are quite problematic, like those in the care economy, those in the janitorial services, day laborers, and beyond. And with that, I will pause, but just see if our County Attorney's Office has anything they would like to add.
I'll defer to Mr. Valim or Ms. Malura. I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay. We would love your feedback on this item.
Feedback? Supervisor Pine?
I just want to thank Shereen for her excellent work in this, in this project, and, you know, really, really, really learning from others and adopting best practices and adopting a phased approach. So I think you've just done an outstanding job on this, and really appreciate your, your work.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
I just want to also thank you for the thoughtfulness, and I love, I love like the visuals and understanding kind of the pathways that folks in the community will have towards getting support when they are the, the victims of wage theft. And I also want to, you know, continue to highlight what, what you already said, which is that, you know, there are, this is essentially like, this is a huge equity initiative in the sense that the people most impacted by wage theft are people of color, are many times women in the caregiving industry. And so I want to appreciate the thoughtfulness again, and the, you know, the way that these groups will be centered, and I'm really excited to support this.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for your work, and the County Executive for supporting this, County Council. Also want to thank our District Attorney's Office. We have a very excellent District Attorney's Office that's been doing this work and put a partner on it with us. And thank our partners in labor, who also worked with us as stakeholders. This is a, this is a very big day for those in our county who are working very vulnerable jobs, who don't, who don't, and the power dynamic don't always have a voice to go ahead and confront injustice. And in doing this work, and, and Shereen, when, when you pointed out to, to me in my office, how many judgments there are in San Mateo County, that where people went through the process, and they haven't been able to collect that money? That's, it was, it was, it was in the millions. It was staggering. This is a problem that exists here now, and I am so grateful for the county taking this step forward today to help those in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Thank you, Shereen. We'll call for questions? No questions? All right, then, public, what's that? Public comment?
Right, we'll start with Mercedes Segura, followed by Rosa Shields.
Mr. Clerk, do you want to make the announcement about 1:00?
Oh, yes. So in about maybe 10, 15 minutes, we need to take a quick, a minute, two-minute break for video recording purposes, and then we'll resume the public comment around 1:00.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, Members of the Board, and Mr. Callagie. My name is Mercedes Segura. I am the Chapter Chair for the County of San Mateo, SEIU Local 521, representing over 2,000 county employees, and an Executive Board Member of the San Mateo Central, Central Labor Council. On behalf of the county employees of the community, I extend a heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Supervisors for establishing the Office of Labor Standards and for providing us with an update today. This pivotal initiative underscores our commitment to fair labor practices and in ensuring equitable treatment for all workers. Your foresight in the creation of this office will undoubtedly promote a more and supportive work environment across our region. Thank you for your dedication to advancing the rights and ensuring that our workforce is protected and supported.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julie Lynn, followed by Lamoyne Worline.
Thanks, Zicky. Good morning, Julie Lynn, San Mateo Labor Council. Nice to see everybody today after your incredibly brief first part of today's meeting. But really, I'm just here to say a whole lot of thank yous. Supervisor Mueller had said this is huge today, and especially to us in the labor community, so I wanted to come on mic to put on the record how deeply in love I am with all of you that are involved in this. But to speak more eloquently and professionally, I wanted to say thank you to the Board for your belief in, your commitment to, and your investment in this project. To Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Pine, and to Marisol and Linda, who tells me she's in the back. Thank you to all of you and your teams for the work that you did to stand this up, the research, the countless meetings, everything you all went to to figure out how to create the most effective and impactful office that you could. Thank you for doing that. And I would also like to say thank you to the County Manager, County Council, and District Attorneys for the countless hours that you all spent trying to figure out the powers and duties of your respective offices in relation to the OLSC, which I know was no picnic, but I very much appreciate how you all came together to figure out how this could work and sent as many resources as we could. And finally, thank you to Shereen. You probably didn't think this would end up on your plate as our Equity Officer, but you have really embraced it, made it your own, and really poured yourself into this effort, and I wanted to say that it's been incredible to see this dedication, especially knowing that this isn't your background, so it, it means a lot how deeply you embraced this. And last year meeting, as we said, the labor community's been hoping to see this happen for nearly a decade. We're very excited that it's incredibly close to opening the doors, and on behalf of labor as a whole, and the, the workers at this office will help. Thank you, and you've really done an incredible thing today.
Thank you. Lamoyne Worline Heing, followed by Guadalupe Ramirez.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, Honorable Members of the Board, and staff members as well. My name is Lamoyne Worline Heing. I work with Unite Here Local 2, that's the Hotel Restaurant Food Service Union, and I also have the honor of serving as President of the San Mateo County Central Labor Council. I too come here with my colleague Julie to express our thanks and to commend the Board on this very, very important initiative. And without belaboring things too much, I cannot emphasize enough how every week my union receives calls from restaurant workers, hotel workers in the county, asking about what they can do about this. And absent a union that can file a grievance and go through established procedures to seek redress, most of the time, we need to tell these workers that there's nothing our union can do, and that it's a legal matter. And it's really very unfortunate, because in doing that, we know that most often, we're not giving that person options, we're not giving that person a path forward. So I cannot emphasize enough how important this is, and how much of a dramatic and immediate impact this is going to have on the lives of literally thousands of people in our county. So again, thank you all very much for this very important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Guadalupe Ramirez. Followed by Magali Gomez.
Buenas tardes, Supervisores. Mi nombre es Guadalupe, y he vivido y trabajado como trabajadora agrícola en Pescadero durante los últimos 20 años.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Guadalupe, and I've worked, lived and worked as a farm worker in Pescadero for the last 20 years.
Me gustaría comenzar expresando que apoyo esta iniciativa tan necesaria para todo el condado de San Mateo.
I'd like to begin by expressing that I support this much-needed initiative for all of San Mateo County.
Reconozco que esta oficina aún se encuentra en sus primeras etapas, pero tengo una pregunta que espero que todos consideren.
Although I recognize that this office is still in its early stages, I have a question that I hope you will all consider.
¿Qué pasa si una persona mete una denuncia contra su lugar de trabajo y su empleador se entera y lo despiden?
What happens if a person files a complaint against their workplace and their employer finds out and fires them?
¿Qué asistencia financiera brindará la oficina de cumplimiento de las normas laborales y del condado para que esta persona mientras busque y tenga otro trabajo?
What happens if a person files a complaint against their workplace and their employer finds out and fires them? What financial assistance will the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement in the county provide?
Entiendo que el condado hará todo lo posible para evitar que esto suceda, pero ¿qué pasa si sucede? ¿Qué pasa si sucede esto? ¿Qué ayuda recibiremos? Gracias.
I understand that the county will make every effort to prevent this from happening, but what if it does? What assistance will we receive? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Magali Gomez. Followed by Maria Juana Zavala.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Magali Gomez, and I come from a, a small agricultural town called Pescadero. Today, I come in place of my father to represent his voice. He could not make it today because he cannot take the time off of his work. While my father supports the intense intent and the purpose behind forming the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement, he would also like to address concerns about the office. For context, my father has 20-plus years of experience in the agriculture industry in San Mateo County. Therefore, his concerns are based on his own and his fellow coworkers' real-life situations in attempting to address labor violations they have either experienced or witnessed themselves. When hard-working but vulnerable low-wage workers, especially those without legal status, want to file a complaint about a violation of their labor rights, the biggest fear that stops them from doing so is disclosure of their personal identity to their employer. A complaint process without guaranteeing a worker's anonymity is a big concern for them, including my father. A couple months ago, during a meeting with Del Campo Alcambio in Pescadero, which my father was president, Supervisor Mueller mentioned that anonymous complaints would be possible with this new office. This is great news for everyone who works in agriculture, but this intrigued my father. A few years ago, my father filed a complaint to the California Labor Board, they could, but they could not guarantee his confidentiality. This begs the question, will it be possible through this new office to file a complaint without disclosing their identity to their employer? How would you ensure confidentiality, and to what extent? Again, my father supports the intention, but his concern is not only his, but shared by many. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Juana Zavala, followed by Estela Antonio.
Hola, Supervisores, y gracias por la oportunidad de hablar con ustedes hoy. Mi nombre es María Zavala. Soy trabajadora agrícola y vivo y trabajo en Pescadero desde hace veintinueve años. Yo he tenido la oportunidad de trabajar en varios ranchos y sé que es muy importante que el condado ayude a proteger a los trabajadores agrícolas, los empleados.
Hello, Supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is María Zavala. I'm a field worker and I live and work in Pescadero for twenty-nine years now. I have had the opportunity to work in various fields and I know that it's very important that the county help and protect the field workers and the employees.
Porque, por ejemplo, yo no tenía el conocimiento de que ser una persona part-time tiene el derecho a días de enfermedad al año. Porque en todos los trabajos que yo he trabajado siempre me dijeron que no tenía derechos a los beneficios. Siempre se nos ha negado los derechos por no tener conocimiento de las leyes.
For example, I didn't have the knowledge that being a part-time person, that we had the rights to sick leave. Because in all of the jobs that I have worked at, they always told me that I didn't have any rights to benefits. They have always denied our rights for not having the knowledge of the law.
Y, por ejemplo, yo empecé un pequeño negocio de cultivo de flores, las cuales las vendo en los farmers markets. Y esta oficina me ayudaría a conocer mis derechos y los derechos de mis trabajadores. Y por eso yo apoyo esta oficina. Muchas gracias.
For example, I started a small business of growing flowers that I sell at the farmers markets. And this office would help me to know my rights and the rights of my employees. And that is why I support this office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Slocum, maybe at this time can we take a two-minute quick break and then come back to public comment? We're video recording. Okay, thank you. The board is currently in recess and we'll be back in about two minutes. All right, the time is now 1:02 PM and we're back in open session. For the record, Supervisors, all the Supervisors are present except Supervisor Canapa. And we'll resume the public comment for item number eight, Mr. President. It is on, but I think, yeah. Well, let's continue with Estela Antonio. Estefania Núñez.
Good afternoon, Supervisors.
Mi nombre es Estefania Núñez.
My name is Estefania Núñez.
Soy parte del grupo del Campo Al Cambio.
I'm part of the Al Cambio group.
Del Campo Al Cambio.
From the field to the change.
Pertenezco a la comunidad de Pescadero.
I belong to the Pescadero.
Y la razón, no es eso, del Campo Al Cambio. Y estoy aquí por la razón de que necesitamos que realmente no seamos más abusados por nuestro patrón. Este, yo trabajo en un, este, no tiempo, ¿cómo se dice?, este, trabajo en, trabajo temporal. Este, mm, no solamente por mis derechos míos, sino también por los que trabajan en restaurant, los de limpieza, los trabajadores individuales. Este, un part-time, por ejemplo, no tiene ningún beneficio. Hablo de gente conocida, núcleo familiar. Este, tampoco pueden exigir un aumento porque eres un part-time, no eres tiempo completo.
I'm here really to talk about how we no longer want to be abused by our employers. I'm a temporary worker and I'm not just here to talk about my rights, but the rest of the workers, cleaning people, people in my own family, people that I know. We have no benefits. We can't ask for a raise because we are part-time employees.
Y creo que es, este, realmente sí tenemos una necesidad, si es un problema vigente. Este, creo que necesitamos tener nosotros un lugar donde podamos poner nuestra voz, nuestra petición, nuestra queja. Y sobre todo, pues lo más importante, este, tener nuestra protección para no vernos afectados en el trabajo. Y, este, apoyar a los trabajadores individuales también porque ellos también necesitan, este, tener una ayuda. Este, y pues el problema está aquí. Yo estoy de acuerdo que se apruebe esta oficina porque es una manera de la cual nosotros podemos beneficiarnos para ayudarnos.
And I think this needs to be solved. This is an actual problem. We need a place where our voices can be heard and where we can file our complaints. And it's very important because all of the workers are being affected. And I support this myself and so all the workers' rights are protected. And I would like you to approve this office for our benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Romero, followed by Joanne Sandoval.
And for our interpreter, I may have missed this on Zoom, but would you mind introducing yourself?
I am Teresa Mendeville, Spanish interpreter.
Buenas tardes, señores Supervisores.
Good afternoon, dear Supervisors.
Y personas aquí presentes en el público. Mi nombre es Nicolás Romero González y vivo por catorce años aquí en Pescadero.
Good afternoon, everyone here in the public. My name is Nicolás Romero González. I live in Pescadero for fourteen years now.
Soy activista del grupo del Campo Al Cambio y miembro activo de la Comisión de Trabajadores Agrícolas del Condado de San Mateo de la Costa Sur.
And I'm a field worker, an activist of the Del Campo Al Cambio group and active member of the Commission of Farm Workers of the County of San Mateo of the South Coast.
Señores Supervisores, mi presencia aquí es para apoyar la asignación de esta oficina de cumplimientos de normas laborales en el condado de San Mateo.
My presence here is to support the initiation of the Office of the Workers of the County of San Mateo or the Labor Enforcement, I'm sorry.
La cual ayudaría a la solución de asuntos o problemas de los trabajadores que tengan en sus pagos o en algunos otros tipos de problemas con sus empleador.
This office would help give a solution to the problems of the workers that have their pay or any other type of problem with their company or employer.
Así pues, mi presencia aquí se debe que, ay, yo, que vengo a solicitarles a ustedes, señores Supervisores, la nueva oficina de cumplimiento de pagos, de pagos de normas laborales de este condado.
So my presence here is due to that I that I am here to ask of you that the new Office of Labor Enforcement and labor norms of the County of San Mateo.
Gracias por permitirnos ser escuchados, señores Supervisores, ya que en la actualidad existen abusos de no pago a los trabajadores y preocupa porque el no pagar al trabajador los beneficios de días de enfermedad, vacaciones, días festivos, overtime and the others.
I thank you to allow me to be heard since this, nowadays, there are abuses of lack of pay to the workers and that concerns us because when they don't pay the workers, the benefits of sick leave, vacations, holidays, overtime.
Al trabajador deja de recibir su pago correcto y el estado, el gobierno, el estado y la federación dejan de recibir y de captar los impuestos que son necesarios para los fondos de los proyectos a futuro.
When the workers stop receiving the correct pay and the federal and state governments, they stop getting the taxes imposed on employers that are necessary to fund the projects.
Porque para destinar fondos, para haber una mayor captación de impuestos, a la fecha muchas compañías no lo hacen a los trabajadores agrícolas y trabajadores correctamente como lo mandata la ley. Gracias.
So these funds are necessary for the projects for the future, so when the state and the federal government don't receive these taxes, many companies do not pay the workers correctly as the law mandates.
That's all. Gracias.
That is all. Thank you.
Gracias.
Through the President, we're calling Estela next. So Estela Antonio.
Hola, Supervisores. Mi nombre es Estela Antonio Martínez. Este, yo vivo en Pescadero por veinticuatro años y en Pescadero yo siempre he trabajado en campo. Y yo creo que es importante traer más ayuda para los trabajadores del campo.
Hello, dear Supervisors. My name is Estela Antonio Martínez. I have lived for twenty-four years in Pescadero and I've always worked in the fields. And I think that it's important to bring more help for the field workers. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne Sandoval, followed by Ariana Santana.
Hello, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joanne Sandoval. I'm the community organizer for Puente de la Costa Sur, a community-based organization in Pescadero. I want to share what my team and I will be doing this evening. Tonight at the Pescadero Community Church, our team, in collaboration with the San Mateo County's Farm Worker Advisory Commission, will be hosting a workers' rights workshop for farmworkers provided by a labor rights attorney from California Rural Legal Assistance. This workshop is taking place due to the many questions and complaints that our organization, as well as our partner organizations, regularly receive around paycheck discrepancies. Some of the complaints that I have personally received from farmworkers working in Pescadero include complaints about being paid less than the minimum wage, complaints about not being paid overtime, not being paid on time, or not receiving a final paycheck after they are laid off, or not being provided with a pay stub when they request it. While these types of workshops organized by community organizations are a great starting point, they cannot replace enforcement and regulatory mechanisms that a county agency such as the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement can implement and execute in order to prevent future violations of our workers' rights. We need to do much more to put a stop to various forms of wage theft that are happening in our county. For these reasons, I support the creation and funding of the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. I look forward to seeing this new office taking action in the South Coast communities and positively impacting the lives of hard-working farmworkers in Pescadero. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ariana Santana, followed by Hyunmi Kim.
Good afternoon. My name is Ariana and I am present today to lend my support for the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement, a long-awaited initiative for San Mateo County. I'm joined by members of Del Campo Al Cambio and my colleagues from Puente. Working at Puente, I have repeatedly received questions from members of the community, particularly farmworkers regarding their labor rights, regardless of their immigration status. These questions include when their overtime pay is supposed to start, why they haven't been recruiting paid time off, and other issues regarding their pay stubs. While several participants became intrigued by the mention of this office, they also expressed some skepticism as they have lost faith in the county and law enforcement. They express their apprehension regarding the role of this office in providing assistance, support, and ultimately protection in the event of a complaint being filed. Although this office is still in its early stages, I would like to emphasize that confidentiality was a significant concern for numerous participants. They want to be more informed of the specific measures that will be taken to protect their identity from retaliation by their employer in order to establish trust in this office and make them feel at ease when reporting or seeking assistance. But I'm very excited to see what great support and tools this office will provide to individuals, specifically those who are the most vulnerable in our county. So thank you Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Pine for introducing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Hyunmi Kim, followed by our last speaker from Chambers, Stephen Booker.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Hyunmi Kim and I am the Director of Community Engagement and Public Policy at Puente de la Costa Sur in Pescadero, where, as many of you know, many low-wage earners who work in agriculture, food, hospitality, and construction industries reside, and most of them being Latino migrant and immigrant workers. This is a precise reason why the news of the creation of this office, Office of Labor Standards Enforcement, came as very encouraging news since all of you, as the board, committed to ensure that, quote, "specific attention would be paid to workers from vulnerable populations such as women, people of color, immigrants, refugees, and individuals with disabilities, among many others." While this is such an important step to take in order to heighten legal protection for our workers, there is an understandable level of skepticism about effectiveness of new offices' enforcement mechanism. After all, laws are not useful tools if they cannot be enforced. Puente is regularly contacted by and also in touch with the other state and federal agencies such such as the California Department of Industrial Relations, California Labor and Workforce Development Agency, Agricultural Labor Relations Board, and United States Department of Labor. We are often informed by these entities that they exist to ensure the workers' rights are protected and hold those employers who violate labor rights to be held accountable. However, an investigation process itself, the way in which an intake is conducted, the way the laws are explained to workers are often inaccessible to many workers, and an investigation itself sometimes takes many months if not years. Most importantly, as you have heard from our workers, they are often asked to disclose their personal identity. The power dynamics are so severely unequal to a degree that some of our workers are unwilling to report legitimate workplace complaints or concerns, or even report an urgent public care issue such as bad bug infestation at a workforce housing. It has been more than 50 years, to be exact, 54 years since 91st Congress of the United States Subcommittee on Migratory Labor of the Committee on Labor and Public Welfare held a public hearing on exploitation of farmworkers in this country. One of the findings that was uplifted at this meeting, at this hearing, was the fact that, quote, "farm labor placement service and other regulatory agencies are ineffective in their enforcement mechanism." Once again, this hearing took place at the US Congress 54 years ago. So I really want to thank you and you have my deep appreciation for creating this office and as the first concrete step to address the issue of wage theft, it is my hope that we will not only fund the creation of this office, but implement meaningful mechanism tools with a real teeth that are welcoming to our workers coming from immigrant and communities of color. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker from Chambers is Stephen Booker.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, President Slocum, County Manager and Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak and I just want to echo the sentiments and accolades of my sister and colleague Julie Lynn on the creation of this Office of Labor Standards Enforcements. As you can tell, it's extremely needed, as you've heard many testimonies today. I also want to give accolades and deep heartfelt sentiments to all the individuals that came up here to speak at the risk of retaliation and losing their jobs. I'm the political director and community affairs liaison for International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 617, as well as the recorded secretary for San Mateo Central Labor Council. And I have a lot of friends in the community. I live in Half Moon Bay. And I have a lot of friends in the community that are victims of wage theft and intimidation. And it hurts my heart that I represent so many workers that I have friends that come to me and then they don't want me to say anything for fear of retaliation or for losing their jobs. I have a restaurant that I frequent on a regular basis, though I used to frequent on a regular basis, that I found out was in violation having individuals sign away their breaks and standing over them, which they call captive audience meetings, standing over them to see how they sign, which these individuals know that it's against California law that they have to have breaks, but are still intimidated. They're having wages taken out of their checks without their knowledge from tips, yet they're afraid to say anything because they're afraid of retaliation. They looked through the phone book or Google for where to go. And it was funny that I'm sitting there with them and they're looking like, I said, they don't have a place in San Mateo County. They're like, yes, they do. And they Google something and it comes up. They're like, look, right here. They say Julie Lynn. I go, yeah, that's my sister and I'm on the board and I'm the recording secretary. No, that's not where you want to go. So once again, I thank you for this and I have a feeling that this office is getting extremely busy. And the labor community is here to support you in any way, shape, or form that we can. And once again, thank you so much. And a deep gratitude to Supervisor Mueller, who found out about what the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement was during his campaign for Board of Supervisors and took the deep dive and made this come to fruition. So a personal heartfelt thanks to you too Supervisor Mueller. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Madam Court, please proceed with the online comments.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have two hands raised. Again, this is for item eight on the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement. Rich Hedges, followed by Rosa Shields. Rich, please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled with the action that the board is going to take today. I'll tell you that I anticipated this and at our Blue Sky meeting in San Mateo, got noted and agreed to cooperation with the county on cases that come before us to extend them to the county. We really appreciate this. This is going to benefit every city and the county as well. The spending power that's increased over eight times the dollar leaves a worker's hand and goes through the county will help with not only that worker's life, but also raise the taxes that we'll be able to use for infrastructure and other issues within our county. So just a suggestion, I would add retail workers to this. As someone who's a shop steward in a union shop withholding wages through overtime payment, premium time payment, or trying to force workers to work off the clock, I worked very hard as a shop steward to stop this activity. So if it's happening in a union store, I can trust me, people are being told that they have to stay because they didn't complete their work even though their tasks were too much to complete. So we really need to take a strong look at the retail industry because there are lower-paid workers who are constantly used unfairly and their wages withheld. So again, thank you very much for this and let's keep moving in this direction because it not only helps the worker, but it helps the county and the cities involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Rosa Shields, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, Supervisors, County Executive Caligi, and all of our hardworking staff. I'm Rosa Shields, the Community Services Director for the San Mateo Central Labor Council. I'm also a proud resident of San Bruno. I help union and community members and their families who are going through difficult times with information, referral, and direct assistance. A huge ask our office receives, as you heard from Mr. Booker, is about a lot of these calls around wage staff violations and issues. Many of these calls come from Spanish-speaking immigrant workers who do not have secure documentation. I often refer them to the State Labor Commissioner, which feels like a disservice as we all know firsthand how backed up and understaffed that office is. That's why we're so thrilled and grateful for your hard work and dedication and the hard work of our staff here for ensuring the OLC is established. Thank you to Supervisors Pine and Mueller for your leadership on this issue. And as we all know, the issues with the State Labor Commissioner have affected a lot of our most vulnerable workers. Having a local accessible office for folks to call for questions, concerns, and issues will provide better representation and support for our residents. Continuing to support this new office since its implementation will help our low-wage and vulnerable workers, many of whom fear retaliation from their employers, as you heard today, seek justice. Thank you again, and we look forward to the implementation and continuation of the office to support our most vulnerable county residents.
Thank you, Rosa. Mr. President, that was the last comment. Back to you.
Very good. Thank you both. Any concluding comments?
I'd just like to move the item.
Okay. Move the item. Go ahead.
I'll move the item.
A second. Very good. Okay, roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came so far for today.
Item number nine is adopt a resolution opposing Assembly Bill 2797. Author is McKinnor, amending the requirements for a telephone corporation to withdraw as a carrier of last resort. Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you Supervisor Slocum. Colleagues, you may remember that earlier this year, AT&amp;T was going through a process with the CPUC where they had applied to the CPC to be relieved of their COLAR obligations within the state. That last week, the CPUC finally ruled on that and denied AT&amp;T's application. The week prior, after the magistrate ruling came out, preliminary ruling came out indicating the CPUC was likely to do so, AT&amp;T, working with the legislature in Southern California, a legislator in Southern California, brought forward a gut and amend bill, though in the Senate, it's from the Assembly, but it's in the Senate to go ahead and relieve them from the COLAR obligations in two circumstances. In urban areas where there are two or more alternative providers, and then in rural areas where no one is living in a census block or where they have no customers in a census block. Counties, so Marin County, Santa Clara County has already come out against this legislation. There is, I have received a congressional letter today with 11 congresspeople against this legislation. The Rural Counties Association has come out against this legislation. The problem with this legislation, number one, is it undermines the CPUC regulatory authority, which looked at this very closely. I think it's actually disgraceful that while that ruling was still pending, that then you would go to the legislature to do this. But then secondarily, it's deceiving because with respect to what AT&amp;T is saying as respect to rural counties, there is no effect. Rural areas, there is no effect. That's not true. Once a rural, this is what's called point-in-time legislation. Once the determination is made that there are no customers in a census block or that there are no customers there, they turn that census off and can be relieved of their COLAR obligations. If someone moves into that area who needs COLAR help, they can't, there's no longer a COLAR to apply to. It's been turned off already. This is incredibly problematic in areas where we have farmworker housing that we're trying to bring up to scale, where we are trying to expand our housing element for people who have access and functional needs who move into an area. It basically turns a whole part of our county dark from COLAR, which is a big problem. And so for that reason, I brought this forward with President Slocum and with the recommendation of staff too, who's waiting to send a letter to the legislature to go ahead and officially oppose this legislation.
Thank you Supervisor. Any questions for?
Yeah, I do have questions for Connie. If you don't mind coming up Connie. Connie, thank you so much. Can you talk a little bit about the bill? One of my concerns is around the copper. As you know, and it's been well documented, you know, this board in past practices has dealt with broadband issues through the legislation. Has the carrier first resort, have they, are they not providing services to residents? I want to understand, what through the legislation, is every resident, if they move forward with this bill, is every resident not going to be able to get coverage via phone? Is it copper the only alternative?
Supervisor, I, as Supervisor Mueller indicated, it changes how and which areas could be allowed to receive the service. I would have to go back and look at the bill with.
Is there anyone from? I can actually, with respect to AT&amp;T and our South Coast, we met with AT&amp;T, the executive team, emergency management. We all, when we sat down with them, they acknowledged the fact that there are areas in the South Coast where there is no cell coverage or there is completely unreliable cell coverage. In those areas, if someone moved into them, the reason why they can't get rid of those copper wire landlines is specifically because there is no reliability. These are all things that the CPUC considered in denying this application.
All right. So my understanding and what you're saying, Mr. Mueller, is that if they make this transition, AT&amp;T, that there is no coverage, correct?
So in some areas of our county, there is no coverage and AT&amp;T has indicated they have no plans to actually expand coverage to that in their cellular network or broadband network at this time. They testified to that actually in this room.
Got it. And so the choice between us today and the resolution that you're putting forth is that if we, you know, if we oppose this bill, that it's the difference of between turning off service to this rural areas and then making sure that they're having the copper in place. I'm just curious to.
What we're ensuring is that people will have the ability, if they move into the areas where there are no service or if they're in an area where there's a unreliable service, they'll have access to those copper networks. And that's the difference, is that if this were to happen, this legislation were to pass and AT&amp;T were to designate areas that they turn the COLAR off, people would no longer have access if they deemed that their reliability was not sufficient or if there was no service to gain access to that COLAR service. That's the big problem. And so we have areas in our county where reliability is so bad that individuals have kept their copper landlines in order to reach out to us and frankly, that we used to reach out to them during times of emergency, but also day-to-day emergency. The other issue that really comes about from this is that the CPUC within the regulatory framework right now looks at all of these issues in making a determination of whether someone can turn off COLAR. This legislation provides no regulatory body to go ahead and look over AT&amp;T as it's making this determination within the framework of the legislation. So there are no procedural safeguards either.
So my concern, I'm not going to be supporting this today. My concern is that if this goes before the PUC, that this could be a three-to-five-year process of people having internet connectivity. As we've, as this board has worked on, as other boards have worked on throughout the state, I have a colleague, not a colleague, I know someone who sits on the Board of Supervisors. What I'm concerned about is this potential $2 billion investment in terms of upgrading broadband.
Supervisor, that is a nonsensical argument.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, of course. I mean, we're in different positions and.
But it's just not based in any fact.
Yeah, I know. I know. I hear you. It's not the answer you want to hear. I get it. I've been, I understand where you've been and I get it. I'm just trying to voice my opinion. So, look, technology is ever-evolving. It's ever-changing. I was struck about three years ago when we had those kids, I think it was in Monterey County, they were at the Taco Bell trying to get internet access. What I'm worried about today is that we're trying to solve a problem that could have adverse consequences for others. And I'm concerned about the broadband. My understanding through state testimony and Connie, maybe you could report back to this board, is that there have been assurances by carriers that people aren't going to be left behind, that their service will not be turned off. Now, Mr. Mueller here, and I understand it, Mr. Mueller is saying that's not true.
Well, actually, the CPUC looked at this issue and said that wasn't true. And I think they specifically went through the fact that there was unreliability within the AT&amp;T claims to turn off their COLAR application.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we're here in Silicon Valley. I'm just worried that with this legislation, it makes us look like we're dinosaurs. I'm concerned about what it means for areas. We've talked about equity. I'm not talking about San Mateo County. I'm talking about the state of California. There are people out there who are hurting for investments in broadband. And this is, you know, when we were in the pandemic and, you know, Supervisor President Slocum was instrumental, we were having issues with people around connectivity. And so I think, I think the spirit of this legislation makes some sense. But I think at the end of the day, I'm not, and Mr. Niblin knows this, I'm not the biggest fan of the CPUC. I've seen the CPUC and how they've made decisions. And some of their decisions don't reflect the community. Now, when you look at, when you look at the Assembly and you look at the state senate, I have.
There were thousands of comments.
I know.
Thousands of comments on the CPUC against.
Look, I'm wrapping up, Mr. Mueller. I respectfully, I understand. You're going to have the opportunity to comment. I get it. It's not what you want to hear and it troubles me that I have to bring this up. But I think when we look at the Assembly, we look at the Senate, and we look at direct representation, I believe that's the purest process. I've dealt with the CPUC on Waymo and we've dealt with them on other issues. They're an appointed board by the governor's office. And I do not have the confidence. And I do not have the confidence in the CPUC. And I believe that this decision making process should be done by the legislator. We should figure it out. I am concerned that there, this potential delay will affect people who need connectivity, especially people who haven't historically had access to broadband. So I think there's a lot at stake. And while I appreciate where you're coming from, I'm not going to be supportive of this.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
Yeah, I'd like to respond. So this legislation actually provides no funding for broadband. It provides absolutely no plans for the San Mateo County South Coast Coastal Region or any area that doesn't have broadband. There's absolutely nothing in this legislation that provides any assurances that any, any timetable for broadband in San Mateo County would be increased. All this legislation does is make it so AT&amp;T can turn off their Kohler obligations in areas that are, where we have people who are underserved with access and functional needs and who need actually be able to utilize telecommunications in time of need where there's either rely, no, not reliable cell service or no cell service. And I, for that reason, I'm disappointed that it's not going to be unanimous vote as it was in Santa Clara County and in Marin County.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are we going to take a public comment on this?
Sure. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public on Zoom, please click raise hand to comment on item number nine opposing AB 2797, amending carrier of last resort. Three hands raised, Catherine Slater Carter, followed by KTB. Catherine, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I want to add some facts and personal experience. Some of you know me, I've been active on the coast for a long time and live in Montero. On September 29th, last year, my house burned down. I had no 911. I have been reliant on cell phone and a server in my house, but I had to go quite a ways out of my way to call 911 because there was no copper line. We were using copper line through our server as an adjunct, but we thought we were safe. There never has been cellphone out where my house is. I moved into another house that I happened to have in Montero. It had AT&amp;T copper line. We were a little bit late with the bill, they cut us off. That was six months ago. They keep assuring us they're going to turn our copper line on in a few days because our internet and our cell phones are so unreliable. We have to constantly be redialing and trying to get or walk outside several blocks to be able to hold a conversation. And this is in Montero. This is 11 miles from Daly City. There are many, many people I talk to here who need their copper lines. They're elderly, they're handicapped, they have no other resources and our internet is bad. So please do what you need to do. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. I really appreciate your work on this. And like I said, it's been six months and I can't get AT&amp;T. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Carlisle An Young, please unmute. I think we lost one of our speakers, I'll double check that. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Can you hear, thank you, I live on coast in Moss Beach. We, this winter, we had three days of no power. And of course, that meant you couldn't charge your cellphone. You couldn't use your cellphone unless you plugged it into your vehicle car port and tried to run your battery on your car to make the cellphone charge. And I finally went down when Supervisor Mueller arranged for the Sheriff's Department to put an emergency charging station vehicle out there. It was one of their command vehicles and in El Granada. But the point is, it's, this is not about broadband. When, when we have power, I have wonderful broadband here. And I usually have really excellent cellphone service, but there are many people up and down the midcoast and Pescadero areas, La Honda. You get back there, you don't have any good cellphone service. This is not about broadband. This is about landlines. So I hope Supervisor Canapa will reconsider his position and consider the rest of the community and not just your Daly City's area. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlisle. I did show one hand raised for KTB. Let me see if this person would like to speak. KTB, if you can unmute to confirm. KTB, final call. Okay, final call for hands raised. No further hands, Mr. President, back to you.
Very good. Mr. Mueller, do you want to make a motion here?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just move, move the item forward.
I'll second.
Real call?
I'll take the real call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Canapa. You and President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes, but Supervisor Canapa casting in.
Thank you. Well, our last item, I think it's our last item is item 15. Get a circle back and pick that up.
Yes, Mr. President, that's right. I actually had a document I wanted to have distributed to the, to the board. It's just since we had some time between consent and now we took the opportunity to, to go ahead and provide a marked up version of the, of the resolution that was actually included in the packet along with the staff report.
This is for item 15 or something else?
This is item 15.
Okay, thanks.
Correct. And, you know, the guidance from the Supervisor, Supervisor Mueller, was that wanted this item to move forward, but with an understanding that we would have seven members of the, of the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council as opposed to five. So what we went and did is mark this document up to show what it would look like with seven members. As you can see, the title of the, of the item would change. In the last whereas clause, we would change a reference from a five member generally elected advisory council to a seven member generally elected advisory council. Under the now therefore is hereby resolved, you can see under item one, again, a reference to seven council members rather than five. A couple of places where that changed, a few places actually where that changed. And then the, the form of ballot question itself, I'll just go ahead and read it. I know we're, been here a long time, but I just want to make sure the record's clear on this. So the form of ballot question that the board would be approving if it adopts this resolution would be, shall the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council's membership be reduced from 13 council members to seven council members, all seven of whom to be elected at large to serve four year terms except that? For those council members elected at the November 5th, 2024 election, the four candidates receiving the highest number of votes to serve initial, to serve initial four year terms commencing January 1, 2025, and the three candidates receiving the next highest number of votes to serve initial two year terms commencing January 1, 2025 with yes or no. And then under item 1B, again, some conforming changes to make clear again that we would be dealing with seven rather than five members. And again, the change is marked there. So that's the, that's the proposal subject, any feedback from, from you all?
So, yeah, so and just for my colleagues, so this initially was brought to the PMAC. It was unanimously voted for. We've heard from two PMAC numbers today. Mr. Taylor Allen and, and Mr. Skinner now who reconsidered. Mr. Skinner asked that we move this from five to seven, so I'm happy to do that. There were 13 members originally, so this, there has not been an election in Pescadero in over 20 years with it being a 13 member body. So the idea is to try to move the number down to seven so we could actually have an election within Pescadero. Whether or not, but what's also important to know is we are not actually changing it to seven members today. What we're doing is we're presenting the community of Pescadero, within the area, the P, the Peninsula Municipal Advisor Committee with the option of moving it to seven. It's actually putting the issue before the voters. So we're going to ask the voters first, do they want to go ahead and reduce it from 13 to seven? And if then, if they want to reduce it to seven, how many and how, who would they want to elect? So we're not actually imposing on this them, to them. We're actually providing them with the opportunity to go ahead and make that choice, which will be the first local issue voted on with respect to the Municipal Advisory Committee in 20 years. So, and I should say, we also, at the meeting where we put this in front of them, there were members of that commission which, which actually spoke incredibly favorable and were excited about it. Although we have two members today who have gone ahead and raised concerns, the major, the other members of that commission that day were actually very supportive of this. With respect to the issue raised by Mr. Skinner about the $500, I believe the Elections Department and President Slocum, you can verify this. If an individual has a need based issue, that that, the amount of money that it costs to actually run is waived by the Elections Office. So if a person can't pay to run, the amount is waived. And that's something that certainly can be presented at that time. So, but this was, this committee, advisor committee was initially set up as a committee to be elected. And so by dropping it to seven, we're actually just trying to go ahead and maintain that purpose.
How many registered voters in the district?
Mr. President, I actually don't, I don't know. I'd have to defer to, get that information for you, but I don't have it today, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I was just going to note, Mr. President, and just to dovetail what Supervisor Mueller was saying, if of course the vote is no, then things will remain as they are. You'll remain with 13 members and that'll be that.
We're just simply asking the community if they want to drop it.
Yeah, okay.
In regards to public comment, there's no speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment. This is for item 15 regarding Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. Three hands raised, Catherine Slater Carter, followed by Carlisle An Young. Catherine, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I was on midcoast community council for eight years. I'm very familiar with PMAC and with the way local unpaid and unlistened to elected bodies are treated in San Mateo County. But that said, I think that this needs more outreach and it needs to be consideration for the other side for the election. As you all know, generally, an election has two sides. This is going to cost people in a underserved community a fair amount of money to be able to get out and argue for keeping the 13. And I think that the county needs to find a way to allow people to argue both sides without cost because the people in the community, not necessarily PMAC, but in the community probably didn't ask for that. We just had a very long hearing on labor, a labor office for underrepresented people. And yet you're doing this without going around and asking and taking polls and so on. Please follow the fair process that is needed for our democracy. I think that just to do this with mostly hearings at the Board of Supervisors, when most people in Pescadero can't probably even get in here or have no way of knowing ahead of time, I think that's disrespectful of the entire population and community, the proud community of Pescadero. So thank you, please find a way to make this a fair election.
Thank you, Catherine. Carlisle An Young, followed by Rob Skinner. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri. Once again, I live in the unincorporated midcoast, but I'm speaking on behalf of the people in Pescadero as well as the midcoast. We are served by mainly these two advisory councils, the midcoast community council and the PMAC, Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. And if the county is weighing in heavily on this and they haven't given us any kind of reason to support this project, I think you ought to consider making them a paid board because they can't get enough people to run when it's for free. There's a lot of involvement, but it's usually older members because people who have regular jobs can't afford to take this much time. And it's, it's only fair because otherwise it's just like a council that doesn't have any clout. It's whatever they decide the county can overrule or ignore. And that was basically Don Horsley's attitude. He didn't ever want to even come to our meetings because he didn't like to listen to people's ideas or hear what we had to say. But I have to say Supervisor Mueller has been a lot more supportive of our entire district of unincorporated, unrepresented or underrepresented people. So hopefully down the road, you guys will look at paying these people for what they do for the county because it is a unpaid job and it's quite a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlisle. Rob Skinner, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. The prior speakers would let me know where to. Thank you both for your support. Those points are very well made. We're pretty remote, as everybody knows, it has to drive out there. And everybody that drives out there from the county is on, on the clock and their expenses are reimbursed. And as you know, gasoline is horrifically expensive. So any stipend that we could get would be wonderful. I would also add that I think the fees should be just flat out waived, waived because, you know, it's like, what is $250, I think, filing fee and a few other items like that. So I don't think it should be needs based. Everybody I know out here is in need. So if you would look into that, appreciate it. It was waived before and the Elections Commissioner said that we didn't have to file Form 700. And I believe 700 was designed to be filed by anyone that's salaried to avoid conflicts of interest and. That anyone would want to do is file. Pardon me?
I lost a bit of your words unless it was my own connection.
I don't know where we left off. What I'm saying is, is Form 700, I believe, was designed to be filed by people who are salaried and have the opportunity to make decisions. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, oh, good, because the countdown stopped. For those people that like the supervisors who are salaried, can make executive decisions, can impact the lives of people directly, and there is a financial consideration. In our case, none of that exists. So I'd like to have that waived as well. So if you could look into that, check with the Elections Office because that's already been done, so there is a precedent set. And thank you all for your time. I didn't realize I needed to program the entire day, but I'm happy I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that was the last comment. Back to you.
Thank you very much.
So as it's an advisory council, I can go ahead and look within my discretion and measure K on just picking up the fees for, for that if I'm allowed to by a matter of law. But I'll go ahead and look into whether we can waive the fees. But I think it sounds like we addressed the other concern from five to seven from Mr. Skinner. With respect to the four, seven, Form 700, I can go ahead and meet with the, the PMAC afterwards because I don't believe that's something that's, that we're bound on in this resolution today. So.
Who pays for this election?
Mr. President, the, the county pays for the election.
Thank you. And then we haven't, we've talked about the filing fee being waived, but what about the cost of a candidate statement? I'm assuming there'd be candidate statements in the sample ballot booklet?
Possibly so, that's right. And Mr. President, I'd note that actually the, that is frankly the current state of affairs with respect to, to elections is that insofar as somebody stands for election, that we're not really breaking any new ground one way or the other with respect to that. In fact, you may have 13 people doing it as opposed to 10 or seven, rather.
Right now, it's the process that they would be elected, they just never have enough candidates. So we're just lowering the threshold. Because it's a, it's an empty, it's basically a, a body that's always half empty.
Right, but the, uh, my only point was there is a cost to making a, a candidate statement.
Yeah, so we can look into going and waiving that.
For your discretionary funds, it's going to jump.
Yeah, but it's not, I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that many, I don't think it's that many, uh, residents, but we'll go ahead and look into doing that. I'll commit that we'll look into doing that with the registrar's office.
Yeah, okay, that would be good. Okay, thank you. Is that it for public comment?
That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
Okay, so make a motion, please.
I'll go ahead and move the item forward.
With, with those changes.
With those changes, yes.
Second.
I'll take the real call, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canapa?
Yes.
Thank you and the President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Well, there we are to the adjournment of this meeting at, uh.
It's 2:00 PM exactly.
2:00 PM exactly.
We will have a closed session, but nothing to report out.
Very good, thank you.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.